We'd like to welcome everybody to the September tenth meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. And tonight before our prayer, I would like to just take this opportunity to go around if the Alderman would like to. And we'll probably talk about the storm a little bit more under the city manager's report. But you know, truly, this since Saturday and through today, this is a truly a time of Thanksgiving for us and a time to be praying and looking for guidance for some other areas of North Carolina and the Bahamas, East Emerald Isle and Oprico. So at this time, if any Alderman want to make any comments, you can, and then we'll go with the prayer. Okay, Reverend Johnson of Ebenezer Presbyterian Church, would you come up and do our prayer for us?
Shere Bower is. Gracious, loving Father, in your beloved Son Jesus' name, we have symbol as your people to engage in this important meeting concerning our city and residents. We thank you, dear God, for the leadership that you have entrusted to guide us in moving in the right direction and pursuing those things that are good for the well-being of all of our citizens. We ask you to bless each one tonight as they open up their hearts to listen and to make decisions on matters that concern all of us. Bless the waiting congregation here and give us an understanding heart and an open mind to the actions that will be voted on for the good of all of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's have to pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am, first let's count the rows.
Alderman Bingel.
Here.
Alderman Harris.
Present.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Bass.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, at this time, let's go to the consent agenda. Do we have, okay, we do have some. Tonight, we have a request of petitions of citizens, starting with the first one with Davie Pryor. Come forward, sir, and would state your name and address for the record.
Name is Davie Pryor, D-A-V-I-E, last name Pryor, P-R-Y-O-R.
Yes, sir, you're right, yes.
Okay. I would like, would have liked to speak tonight, but I just learned about fifteen minutes ago that the matter of having to do with noise ordinance has been canceled or taken off the schedule. What I would like to do, with your permission, to come back on a night when it is scheduled and make my presentation, I think it would have the most effect, and wait.
Yes, sir, now, I can assure you of what procedurally will happen that night. You're free to talk for four minutes now if you would like to.
No, I don't think it would be fair to the people here because there's nobody that's attending the meeting that's involved with noise ordinance but myself.
Yes, sir.
So I just don't need to hear my own self-talk.
Okay.
Mayor, can I get his address?
Yeah.
Can I get, could you state his address? Could you tell us what your address is, sir?
Oh, yes, the address is 1003 Karen Drive in New Bern.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much.
I'm going to end the line, sir. The next petition is Edwin Vargas.
Before I read my text, I just want you to show you these maps here. Number one, coming from North Second Avenue all the way down to Tuscan. That's the one that has not been done. This one, number two, runs on the opposite side of Atmore. This is clear and goes all the way to Collecting Pond. And on this one, this is the ditch that comes from Tuscan Lane north on Glen Burney and goes around to the right that goes down to Glen Burne Gardens over by the National Cemetery. No, I'm sorry, the National Garden.
Since I have not heard from the city, here is my and other residents' formal complaint from North Second Avenue, Atmore Drive, and Tuscan Lane, New Bern, North Carolina. First, a ditch on North Second Avenue that comes behind three houses, not the ditch on the left side of Atmore Drive, since I was told it'd be cleared to Collecting Pond. The ditch from North Second Avenue is supposed to be maintained to the corner of the back property, 230 Atmore Drive, make a right turn and go down backside of Metz Climate Control to the ditch on the left of Tuscan Lane to Glen Burne Road. This area has not been maintained. Second, a ditch up from Tuscan Lane north on Glen Burne Road towards the Neuse River has grown large weeds, and that ditch grows, goes toward Glen Burne Gardens and crosses over the street close to the Wapes Water Treatment Plant passing the National Guard Armory going east. This area also has not been maintained. As a resident of New Bern since 1997, and had been our home from April 2002, this is a huge concern. During both Hurricane Irene and now Dorian, I have severe high water levels that could have been less severe if the ditch on North Second Avenue is going down behind Metz Climate Control, makes a left on Tuscan Lane, and ends in Glen Burne Road would have been maintained. Since July 2012, when Mayor Bettis resigned and was voted on by the Board of Alderman after Hurricane Irene, stormwater management is in play. Those areas are to be maintained every ninety days in four sections, which Glen Burne, Glenview subdivision sits in section two. These areas are not maintained to the level of clearing out ditches, only mowed to make them appear to be maintained, which is not fair to the residents of North Second Avenue, Atmore Drive, and Tuscan Lane. If other areas of the city stormwater management are maintained better, why is the area not maintained to the SAG factory level for North Second Avenue, Atmore Drive, and Tuscan Lane? If you would take a look at those areas of concern, they are well overdue for ditch cleaning, mowing, and vine removal. Stormwater management is not being fair to the residents of North Second Avenue and Glenview subdivision, which is where Atmore Drive and Tuscan Lane is located. And that's all I have.
Mayor, I want to, Mr. Vargas, may I speak to you?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vargas, to my understanding, your issues with your property has been resolved?
No, it has not.
Okay.
When I met and spoke with Matt Montane, this area, I'll show you real quickly. This area here that was cleared out by Metz, we thought the ditch ran this way, which is not the case. It comes around these three houses, it goes down the backside of Metz Climate Control, out to Tuscan Lane, and then this ditch here comes out of Tuscan Lane, goes up Glen Burne Road, and makes a right, and that goes all the way around Glen Burne Gardens to the National Armory, and it keeps going down. I have went down North Second Avenue as early as today, and the water is just standing. There are, there are huge pipes that are just covered with weeds, and nothing's been done to it. And what that does is doesn't bring the flow not only around that area going towards Metz, it doesn't let the water flow south. So when stormwater management came into play in July 2012, they cleaned that ditch that I've talked about one time, and that's eight years ago. And that's sad because the residents of New Bern who paid that on their electric bill, the fourteen thousand customers, and it's supposed to be four areas every ninety days. Some of them have served excellent, my area, you know, they take the mower and mow it, but they don't go in there and, I mean, physically clean out a ditch, physically clean out a big piece of pipe that the water's supposed to flow, especially one that's coming out of Glen Burne Gardens. That's huge, and that meanders all the way back there. And, you know, during Dorian and even Irene, when Craven County experienced twelve to fourteen inches of rain, the water never got in my house. But there's other people during, during Irene, that they weren't as favorable as where I live at. I'm just worried about, you know, Glenview, my neighborhood, and North Second Avenue because I've talked to people even there today, and they're just, you know, they got their hands in the air. They paid us charge. They have a dedicated department with employees funding. What's going on?
Well, now, Mr. Vargas, when you reached out to me back in April, and a meeting was scheduled with you and Mr. Montane and Mr. Avery Smith, and they came over to your property, and they looked at the problem that you was having with your ditch and the drainage. So that was a personal property issue, correct?
Well, at the time, at the time, like I showed you on display, I thought, looking at a Google, Google Maps, that the ditch ran along the two prop, the two pieces of properties that Metz cleaned. But that's, he told me, that's not the dedicated ditch. The dedicated ditch is the one I just described. It was cleaned in July 2012 because my next door neighbor reminded me that they cleaned that whole thing up to the left, to Tuscan Lane, out to Glen Burne Road. You could go there, there's vines and trees growing in it. Come on, man.
I, let me reiterate something that when you reached out to me on September second with that email, and you and I have been corresponding thus far with the emails, I personally got on the phone and I called Mr. Montane and Mr. Avery Smith, and I talked with them about that, and they, rest assured, they told me that they had been doing work over on North First, Second Avenue. And I, Mayor, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'm going to ask. Mr. Charles is here tonight, can he come up and explain to what's going on? Or does the board have a problem with that? Because I know that, I feel, Mr. Vargas and all the residents over in that area, I feel y'all pain because I too would not want to live in an area where I'm constantly worried about flooding. So I understand.
I took photos today of North Second Avenue. That's not even in my neighborhood. And the ditch I talked in question, the water can't even flow down the pipe because it's just clogged with crap.
Do the board have a problem with this? If Mr. Charles is here tonight from Public Works, can you please come up and explain some of the work that's being done over in that area? I mean, and Mr. Vargas, I'm not just concentrating on Atmore Drive, Tuscan, Glen Burne. There's Trappers Trail that's over there, that they are experiencing flooding, there's Oaks Road, all of that area. So take it, believe me, I'm working, I'm dedicated, and I'm devoted to getting a solution to trying to get some of this flooding under control.
I know you are, but as a citizen and as a retired now, and I ride on my bicycle and I go down North Second Avenue, and I'm praying that the ninety day is same as cash is working in that area, and it's not.
Well, that's for sure.
I'm taking a mower and cutting, cutting aside of Glen Burne Road, and you go in that ditch, and there's four or five inches of vines and trees growing in it.
Well, I want to say that we're working on it. So if you can be patient with us.
Well, I just want to make the city aware.
Okay, they are.
I know where that ditch is located, and my next door neighbor Ronnie said, hey, by the way, July 2012, that ditch was cut all the way to Tuscan on the left and all the way out to Glen Burne. And the ditch is there, but now if you go next to Metz, it is like jungle habitat.
But can Mr. Charles, will you please explain to, to me and to Mr. Vargas and everyone else that what is the work that's being done over in that area? I talked with Avery and Matt, and Matt is not with us tonight. So if you could, I would appreciate it.
Yes, we, in the last several months, we first started on North First Avenue with the drainage project that we lowered some culverts. There were some yard culverts that had been stalled by homeowners that were too high, so the ditch was slow and actually having to fight an uphill grade to get, to get there. We were able to lower the pipes, but even in that situation, we had less than one tenth to fall in three hundred feet. So you've got to understand elevations in those neighborhoods, the road and the invert of the ditches, the ditches are about three feet, which that makes it about three feet above the river normal level. So we're in a difficult situation to drain some of those areas, but I believe so far it has helped North First Avenue. After, several weeks ago, we had a heavy Friday rain. We had approximately five inches of rain in four hours. North Second Avenue experienced a great deal of flooding. And Avery Smith and I went out there and met with the residents. And the following day, we were able to get the excavator in there and dig the backside ditch out going down to, there's a pond at the end of the street and the cul-de-sac. At the end of the cul-de-sac, there's actually a catch basin with a pipe running under, and this may be one that Mr. Vargas is talking about. They were able to clean the catch basin out, but we have scheduled to go in and route the actual culvert out with the back truck, and that has not been done.
And this right here, sir, this is on the backside of Metz. This is not a ditch, I was told, but this is a ditch. So none of this has ever been serviced, and this comes from North Second Avenue.
And so we are, we are working in the area, as we're trying to work in every area of the city. And there are a lot of areas to address, and we have been working in that area, and we're going to continue working in that area. We don't like to see standing water. Last night, it was kind of a rare event. We had, northeast wind blew in about six o'clock, raised the water elevation to about two and a half, nearly three feet, similar to Dorian. So the standing water backed up, I'm sure, in some of those ditches on North First and Second Avenue. But it's not, they were not making attempts to get that water to go out faster, especially rain events.
Explain one thing to me, because when I talked with Mr. Avery, he said that over in that area, North First, Second Avenue, I think he said. He says some swells had been put in. What is a swell?
A swell is a ditch.
Okay, all right.
They've got some additional drainage in the back of several of those properties to try to facilitate that rainwater to come out.
All right. Thank you. And I will get back in touch with you, Mr. Vargas, and.
I appreciate everything you do, but I just want to address this because it's probably not just North Second Avenue.
Oh, no, it's not.
It's a lot of areas that that place is very low to sea level.
Yes.
And if we can help move the water, I'm, I'm, I'm picketing.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas, and we'll work on that. And Alderman, best you'd like, I think Oliver and Aster and I went out there one time and worked with you some on another issue. We'd be more glad to run out there with you and meet with staff.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Next petition is from Mike Duffy.
Good evening. Mike Duffy, 121 Morning Duck Trail in Trappers Creek here in New Bern. And all I have to say is to all the city servants and employees and good looking out last week, and thank you very much. I know it's a lot of hours, whether it comes here or not. It's just as much preparation work goes into it, and I think you did a great job. I was grateful to have a safe place to go when we got the hurricane warnings and stuff like that. We kind of enrolled it quickly and then quit in elementary school. So, take care, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is Sherri Jones.
Good evening. I'm Sherri Jones. I reside at 507 Metcalf Street. I'm here in support of the resolution, which is line item sixteen on your agenda, to request amendment to land use ordinance regarding bed and breakfast establishments. My husband and I are the longest residing residents of the 500 block of Metcalf Street. We've seen it go from HUD housing, some housing on that block, to spectacular homes that have been redone. And we just, I'm not saying it would go back to that, but we just, our neighborhood is friendly, it's child-friendly. We have children on both 400 and 500 block. And we just don't want to see that change in any way. The owner of 501 Metcalf Street is going to be requesting a four car, we call it a parking lot, in his front yard. And I understand he has support from residents on New Street, but New Street can't see his front yard. So I think it is, it would be an eyesore, and I think it, you know, just, I mean, the trolley comes down our block, and I don't, I think it would take away from the historic presence that we have, especially in the 500 block. And like I said, as the longest, my husband couldn't be here tonight, but the longest residing resident, I just don't want to see anything change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Next petition is Caroline Orman.
My name is Caroline Orman, 512 Metcalf Street. My father moved, well, I'm here about line item sixteen and this proposal. I support removal of that special youth permit. My father moved this house in 1980 in cooperation with Preservation Foundation. Took the home from a multifamily home to a single family home. Had a vision, and we moved ten years ago to this street. We know everybody on this street. My concern also, you know, we have grown into a beautiful neighborhood, but I've got small children. I've got houses on either side of me that are for sale. I'm concerned that if we allow one property to do this, then that sets a precedent. I don't want the children to grow up in a business district. I'm concerned with the safety. I would like to see downtown continue to grow, children to be able to run freely. And I do have concerns about people coming and going that we don't know. So I hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Reverend Ethel Sampson.
Praise the Lord. Good evening to everybody. My name is Ethel Sampson. I live on 1038 Sampson Street in the Duffy Field area. In regards to the city manager and the mayor and all the other issues, I just want to keep in mind Stanley White Recreation Center. I remember years and years ago, before whatever happened, I was a young girl playing on the sand hill and in the pasture. And when the Recreation Center came, I was forty-two years old, and everybody, including the whites and blacks and everybody else, was using that Recreation Center. And I just want to keep, keep it in mind for everybody because a lot of people have almost given up hope. But Duffy Field, we pay taxes, and Duffy Field is somebody too. I just want to remind you that we still are contemplating on Stanley White Recreation Center. And I want you to know that a lot of people, we're talking about themselves, but they can't come up here, but I'm eighty-six, but I still will drag up the steps and speak for them because according to the word, one can chase a thousand and two could put ten thousand to fight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that is the, that's, that's all the requests and petitions of citizens. The next item would be consent agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion we can prove a consent agenda.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. See and none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Item number nine, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine is a presentation by the Craven County Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. Tonight with us is Paul Brown with the Craven County Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. Will present a check in the amount of $64,667 for the city's portion of ABC sales for fiscal year 1819. Also provide an annual briefing to review the status of last year's goals and describe future goals. But I don't think this is Mr. Brown, so I'll let him introduce himself, but maybe Mr. Brown was supposed to come, so.
He's right back there.
They brought the main man here.
They brought the big boss, big guns out.
That's right, right. First off, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, board, and gracious city manager. Appreciate along with me this evening, I have our newest board member, someone who, this board remembers, and that's Commissioner Danny Booker, who's now a member of the Craven County ABC Board. Also this evening, I have our general manager, Paul Brown, and our law enforcement chief, special agent in charge, Matt and I, with me. They, not only supply the, the real muscle. And so, why don't we give you the check right away?
I'll take it.
Get that out of my, get that out of my hand, $27,000. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, citizens, for being here this evening and board. Everything we do in the Craven County ABC Board flows from this mission statement. When we allocate resources, time, energy, it all flows in this. And our, always our goal here in Craven County has been, since it's been since 1935, when we started the store across the street, we have branches at, and that is a safe store. Make sure that it's user-friendly and that we are modern and efficient at what we do. As I said, there's our new, new board members. And you can see that, yeah, they reappointed me. I'm sorry for you that they did that, I guess, but here I am again for another few years. And we're moving right along at the board with about the same amount, thirty, thirty-two employees. This was our goals for last year, and you can see they were pretty good. And you'll notice that we had some goals. I talked to the mayor about this, about putting a theme downtown. And Mr. Mayor, we wanted to do that last year, but let me tell you what happened. A thing called Florence came knocking on our door. And so you can see, we had a little swimming pool down there in the downtown store, and several of the other stores also suffered, but nothing like the downtown store. The money that we allocated for that theme, that's right, that, we had, we had to do other things with it to make that store come back again, worked very hard. It was the first ABC board in seventeen counties in eastern North Carolina that came back. And it was because I want to call out our general manager and our fine law enforcement people for making that happen. And, you know, you would wonder, why were we so concerned about having an ABC store come back? It's normal, see? This, this city is based quite a bit on tourism. We want those grills, we want those hotels, we want those restaurants to have adult beverage. If we close, they don't have it. So we want to open for them as well as our citizens. So this is what we had to do downtown, and you can see it was extensive. The entire store, the bottom four feet had to be gutted out. We lost all our shelving. We lost the front part of it. We lost a lot of electronics. It was a mess. But in all that time, we did not lose one control of one bottle of alcohol. Very important during these times, unlike some of the other counties that had some looting problems, we did not have one bottle of alcohol looted in Craven County and in New Bern. It was all controlled very much. As a matter of fact, we took control of the convention center's alcohol, and we still have a warehouse. There's the $40,000, Mr. Mayor, that we put in that theme. You can see it in the revenue we lost from downtown store, $165,000. Good news is, this is what it looks like today. We're very proud of that store, and you can see that it's bright, cheery, safe for our citizens. And I can tell you that we're back again, revenueing that store and coming up on our, on our line. So that's through a lot of energy, which you see right there. So what are we going to do this year? Here's our goals again this year. You know, we're, we're very, very much involved in our county with the war on opioids, and we are putting money to that end. We have sponsored, helped sponsor, principal sponsor, Stop the Craving was held. We're going to be the principal sponsor of part two of that. And we're going to continue to try to make these stores very upscale. We have a very sophisticated crowd in Craven County, particularly in New Bern. Your fellow citizens like to have rather expensive alcohol up there, and when, we want to, we want to help them and buy that. We want to give them a whole bunch, rather give them a bottle. We have alcohol in that store, by the way, it goes. And we have alcohol in that store, by the way, that goes for as much as $1,200 a bottle, and we routinely sell it. So this is what we're going to do this year. It's quite a bit, as you notice, we're going to be looking at the store over in Bridgeton. We have some, some issues over there. The original, original site we looked at was not environmentally friendly, so we had to ban that site, and we're now looking at another site. So this is going to be the major thing is probably looking at to start a new store over Bridgeton this fiscal year, and we're working to that end. But we're going to have to buy the land first and go back to the, hopefully the board will, we have two commissioners here this evening, the board will approve our request of the land and then we'll move on. But that does not mean that we're going to not do some great things. There's our store right here on Glen Burnie. You'll notice it's all been a new logo, a new marketing approach, very, very cheery store on the outside, and believe me, it really is cheery on the inside. Yes, it's on the hardwood floor. So we're putting a lot of money in our New Bern stores. This is what Glen Burnie looks like just a few weeks ago, and we're going to continue that. In summary, here's, here's the tail of the bottle. This is what we're, what we provide to the state of North Carolina. You'll see that that's, yeah, that's $3.2 million in taxes that we generate here in Craven County to them. We had a very good year, even though we had Florence, we broke another record, over $11, $11 million. We believe that we're going to come very close to $12 million this year. And of course, that means somewhere for our county, which gets 90% of the proceeds, about $800,000 that they generally fund. And then, as you can see, money for our law enforcement, we pay for our own law enforcement. You can see that we pay money for rehabilitation and human resources. And we also, you see that large amount of money for alcohol education. The county has decided to orient that rather than for the underage drinking piece, we're, we're putting that towards the opioid crisis and offsetting that. And for the first time in many, many years, North Carolina and Craven County has dropped down in this horrible disease, and I'd like to think that we have a little bit to do with that. So we expect a good year, a good year for us, there's a good year for our stakeholders, which is the county, city of New Bern, city of Havlock, and the town of Vanceboro. If you're, we have several businessmen on this board, and anytime you see this kind of a slope, that's where you want to be going, and that is where we're going. But it's not at all cost. I'd say that, that Craven County is, ranks frankly, rather low in the per capita drinking. We do consider itself that we have a controlled substance, we treat it that way, and very serious about these, these issues in Craven County. So this is where we're going to be going, and I'll let you look at that right there. And there you get, the city of New Bern was provided this year $64,667 in direct funding, and then of course, the offsets of law enforcement that you didn't have to pay for, and several other things were, were there. And I did keep it under 10 minutes. Do I get a star?
Yes, you do.
Pending your questions, you have any questions?
Is board having questions?
Good job, we appreciate the money.
On my head. Well, thank you very much. I hope to see you next year, and I hope at that time we'll continue to have a check. And I'm hoping it will be $75,000, $80,000. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Let's go to item number 10, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of board. Item 10 is a presentation of the 2019 National Night Out Event. Tonight we have with us Chief Summers and Katrina Longmire, I believe is also here, who's the nuts and bolts of putting this operation together each and every year, which is always held on the first Tuesday of the month of August. This year was on August the 6th. And so, Chief is here to detail a few things, and I know Colleen is working on the video that I don't think is complete quite yet, but will be soon. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Chief.
Mayor and members of board, good, good evening. We're here tonight to recognize the participants of our National Night Out. I believe we had some, if you count our assisted living homes, we had some 25 different communities that participated in National Night Out this year. As you know, it's a national event, but the city of New Bern, I think, goes above and beyond. The city of New Bern really understands the vital role that our community plays in keeping our community safe. Without our community's support, we wouldn't be able to do our job. And the whole purpose of National Night Out is hopefully someone met one neighbor that they didn't know, and the best way to protect your community is to know your neighbor, to look out for your neighbor, and as I said, in every community that I went to, if you see something, say something. So this year, as in previous years, Officer Longmire was the coordinator, and it's a, you can imagine, it's a pretty difficult task arranging 25 different communities to, to visit, but she does a great job every year, and I'm calling her forward now to introduce the community, if the mayor and the board would like to come down and help with the presentation.
Okay, we're going to call them out in mathematical order. Academy Sports was nice enough to let us have their kickoff there. No one here, no one's from Academy Sports was able to make it today, so I'll just put theirs to the side. I'm going to start with Carolina Colors, come up. Coastal Photo Club. Call me in states? Courtyard at Burn Village. Craven Terrace. The Griffin Reed.
I love you. You've heard everything.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is Duffy Field, but thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Thank you. The U M Service.
This is the U M Service, certainly appreciate your support as always. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
He usually has assisted living locations, he gets a lot of people.
Evans Mills. Historic Downtown Residents Association. Home Place of New Bern.
This is always our last stop of the event, and we always have a real good time on King
McCarthy Court. New Bern Fire Department. New Bern Older Adult Housing. Old Town. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. New Bern Historic Riverside. Southern Gentlemen's Court. Southern Gentlemen's Court.
I need to pause right there, we got the Southern Gentlemen's Court accompanying us at their assisted living places, and they're some force on, and it was really well received by the residents, and it was really great, so we give you one if I didn't call it.
The Meadows. St. John Missionary Baptist Church.
Stevens, let's go to item number 11.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to annex contiguous property owned by a warehouser company in Craven 30 West, also known as Craven 30 and West New Bern, identified as tax parcel ID 8-209-13001. Mr. Clifford Parsons, authorized representative for Warehouser, submitted a petition to annex contiguous property consisting of approximately 58.36 acres located in Craven 30 Development, identified as the tax parcel previously identified. And the board voted at its August 27, 2019 meeting to accept this petition and to call for a public hearing to receive any kind of comments on the annexation. Once the board does the public hearing, if they wish to consider to do so, they can adopt an ordinance to annex this property.
Okay, is there any further staff information at this time? Mr. Stevens, any other staff information? This time, we're going to open a public hearing on item number 11. Anybody would like to come forward and ask any questions, make any comments concerning this item, you're more than free to do that.
Mayor, would you like to make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, close the public hearing. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same.
I'd like to make the motion that we adopt this warehouser in our company in Craven, Craven 30 West. Tax parcel ID 8-209-13001.
Second.
Motion and a second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Diggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 12.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rugeri, but item number 12 is to conduct a public hearing on rezoning part of 1701 Simmons Street, tax parcel ID 8-240-105. And if the board wishes to do so, they can adopt a statement of zoning consistency or inconsistency, and then at that point, if the zoning consistency is adopted, then they would need to consider adopting an ordinance rezoning this parcel. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rugeri, who's going to give you some details regarding this rezoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Jeffrey Rugeri, Development Services. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. The request before you tonight is a proposal to rezone 1701 Simmons Street. The applicant, Steve Tyson of Lake New Bern Development, again requesting to rezone 1701 Simmons Street. The existing zoning for the site, a small portion of the site is C4 neighborhood business, the majority of the site is C5 office institutional district. The proposal is to, is to transition those two zoning districts to C3 commercial. The site is 88 acres, it's presently vacant and undeveloped. Just a site map of where it is. You see a sandwich between Oaks Road and the train tracks, got a small frontage on Simmons Street. Site's located about 500 feet, as the crow flies, from Glen Burnie, and about a mile and a half driving to the intersection of Neuse and Glen Burnie. Here's the portion that, that we are zoning to C3, to be rezoned. You have this all in your packet. Here's the existing zoning of the site. You'll see the majority of the site is, is C5, with that paint color there on the east side is a small portion of C4 that fronts Simmons. The proposal is to change the entire, that site to C3 commercial. Adjacent zoning, you'll see it's a hodgepodge out here in this area. We have everything from R6 to industrial within close proximity to the site, R10 adjacent to it, R8, R6, residential and commercial, both very close. There's some C3 on National and Oaks, very close to the area. Existing zoning, C4, it's neighborhood business district, established as a district since with the principal use of land to provide for retailing goods and services to nearby residential neighborhoods. It's designed to keep smaller businesses in that area and to keep large, big retail out, to protect our residential uses. Majority of the site, C5 office and institutional district, established as a district in which the principal use of land is for residences and certain limited businesses and professional offices. Some institutional type uses such as hospitals, medical offices, and clinics. C5 is considered a transition zone between residential areas and more intense commercial industrial zones. The proposal before you is to change those sites to C3. C3, as you know, is our most intense commercial district. It's also most, also our most flexible zoning districts in which you can pretty much run the gambit of uses. I'll go over those a little on the next. C three, as you know, is our most intense commercial district. It's also most, also our most flexible zoning district in which you can pretty much run the gambit of uses. I'll go over those a little on the next slide. C three commercial districts established as a district for offices, personal services, retailing of durable goods and convenience goods, and generally located on the city's radial roads. For our table of permissible uses, here are some of the, these are the uses allowed by right. Not all of them. It's a sample of a good idea of the range of the uses that are allowed in C three. Everything from single-family residential to multifamily hotels, motels, banks, restaurants, athletic facilities, marinas and hospitals. On August eighth, two thousand nineteen, the New Bern Planning and Zoning Board voted seven oh in favor of the proposed rezoning. Staff has reviewed the application and finds the proposed rezoning to be, to be in the public interest and consistent with city's adopted plans. Staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning. Will they answer any questions? If not, open up the public hearing.
Board have questions?
I have a question. Jeff, it may be too early for this, but the only entrance and exit, would that be only on Simmons Street? As far as, is it too early to determine that?
There is, the parcel ownership, as you can see in this map, extends. Thank you.
Need to requisition a battery.
So you can see the parcel does have a frontage along that northern portion. That's not part of the rezoning right now. We'll have to go back through and change that later date, but it does have access off Simmons, which is probably, that's where the main access will be. It will be required two points of access. Whether they meet separation requirements on Simmons, probably not, but we'll have access on those northern pieces adjacent to where the school board's property is.
Which is Oaks Road. Which is Oaks Road.
Correct.
But will they be using the same road that the Oaks Road Elementary School is using now? Is that what your thoughts are?
It's, it's a possibility, sure. I mean, haven't seen the site plan yet. Right now we're in the rezoning stage, so these are things will work out at development stage.
Would we have the opportunity to discuss that later if it was?
We can discuss it, we discuss it at the staff level through our development review process, where all the representatives, as you know well, sit around the table and we all, we review the project and provide comment back to the applicant and make sure it meets all our existing rules and anything else that maybe, maybe create a better development, especially for traffic circulation, for sure.
Okay. I, I was just concerned about the, the traffic going in and out of that road that the school is currently using. In fact, I thought it was a private road, to be honest with you.
Oh, it is a private road. The ones that they're using right now is a private road, correct? It's not a city road.
Jeff?
Yes.
I don't see the developer here tonight. Mr. Tyson, he's not here?
I don't see him.
Okay. Well, I have a lot of concerns about where this parcel is located. And is, is this parcel in the flood zone?
Actually, the, no, it is not. Actually, the part that's not lake is out in the under the flood zone. It's actually high and dry. Yeah.
Well, now, I am no way wanting to be in opposition of this rezoning, but I have some great concerns because where this parcel sits and this parcel is in an area that's conducive to flooding. And I have residents and citizens that live, of this city that lives in, all around this parcel, that have, that experience substantial flooding. And I just don't want to see another development coming in on my constituent citizens of this city and being bombarded with water. That's the problem that I'm concerned with. So I don't know at what stage, I know you said this is just the zoning stage, but once we, once we vote and approve this zoning, then what recourse are we going to have, am I going to have later on with any confrontation?
Flooding?
Yes. And confrontation with the developer, your department, because right now I, I do have some major concerns in that with flooding. And that parcel also sits on both sides of that parcel. There's Jack Smith Creek. There's Rennie's Creek. And I'm just, I have a problem with it. But I, I know that the city is in dire need of housing. And I don't want, I don't want to be in opposition with this, but I got to look out for my constituents. I got to look out for the residents that's living there. I got residents already right now that hasn't even moved, haven't moved back into their homes because of Florence and the flooding problems. So what guarantee do I have that great infrastructure is going to come to that development site? That's going to alleviate some of this water and not pour down on the existing customer, I mean, residents there?
But that's something that we'll, we'll look at. Obviously, you get a stormwater permit. It is adjacent to a lake that they own. I'm imagining that lake is enough to retain and contain the runoff from that site. I don't know that yet. But again, the site is high and dry. Doesn't, doesn't require any special kind of flood mitigation efforts. And those are things that we will review and Matt and his crew will look at when we see what the development plan is.
Also, I, I know when you said it's going to be used as a multifamily housing, and when you say multifamily housing, that means you're talking about high density. So you were talking about, do you even know now, like I said, you probably don't know, how many units are they planning on putting per acre? You don't know?
I was very, I didn't say what it was going to be. I was, I said what it could be. Now, the applicant has expressed that it is looking at apartments. And the highest density that the city would allow is about nineteen point something units per acre on that, for any, any property in the city, so. And that's, might sound like a lot, but for multifamily, that's really, it's pretty average.
Well, then, you know, since, since I really haven't, from you, and like you said, you don't know at this point from what stage of planning the developer is at, I'm going to put it on your back and I'm going to leave it up to you to make sure that when this, when this project is coming forth, that you include me on these meetings. Some of them that I can be included on.
Sure.
So that I can voice my opinion, because I do have a problem with that area, because I know it floods.
Will do.
Okay? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, Mr. Ruggeri, could you clarify that the zoning of the property doesn't necessarily dictate how much impervious surface is allowed? So for example, a more restrictive zoning could theoretically, the plan could have more impervious surface than a more.
Sure. Yeah, as you go more dense, you have less structure that you build. If it was retail, there'd be more parking lots associated with that, so you would be required to retain more water and deal with more water. So again, the development type could be one home and it wouldn't even, there's nothing that we could do. I doubt that's going to be the case. But correct, the development type definitely dictates what the stormwater solution looks like.
Thank you.
Alderman Kinsey?
No, he just answered it for me. Thank you.
At this time, thank you staff for the information. We're going to go and have a public hearing. If anybody would like to ask questions, you're, you're free to come up and make any comments, statements or ask questions.
James Woods, nineteen oh three Country Club Road. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but is this the old Rennie Creeps Mine property?
Yes.
Okay, there's a, a water, there's a sanctuary right across the street from there, on this side of the rebel tracks. As, as you're going up Simmons Street to Oaks Road, on the right-hand side, there's a waterfowl sanctuary. If we make this a C three zoning, or you guys make this a C three zoning, how would that affect, the stormwater runoff affect that waterfowl area, one? And two, how would the water runoff, if you said it's eighty-eight acres, by my numbers, I'm a numbers guy, nineteen homes per acre, that works out to about sixteen hundred and seventy-two homes in that area. That's just rough estimate, without roads or anything. And I can see, foresee storm running, stormwater runoff. Alderman's Best, talking about flooding in that area. It flooded real bad during Florence. People are still trying to get over there. But my main concern is that waterfowl area off to the, to the left or to the right, and also Oaks Road, the school. How would that affect those two areas?
Well, now, I'm going to tell you, Mr. Woods, Oaks Road School was flooded, and that's why I have a problem with this. I don't want to be any way, you know, against this rezoning, but I just see the potential there that with this development coming, we're going to have more flooding. And I, and I don't want that.
Well, I think the, the main problem is down Oaks Road, Jack's Creek and up by Morris Body Shop where that used to be, and then back by Glen Burnie, all that water came towards Oaks Road, and Oaks Road is already low.
Yes.
Because when we first came to New Bern, we were going to buy a property right on the corner of Oaks Road and Glen Burnie, and the property flooded before we closed, so that's why we didn't do it. Okay, so that area has been known, been flooding for twenty, twenty-five years, so we decided to make that a C three. And I understand that what was listed there, but common sense tells me if I have eighty-eight acres, I'm going to put multi homes, I'm going to put a number to, a number of homes in that area.
Exactly.
I'm not going to put businesses in that area with eighty-eight acres. And you're talking about over a thousand homes. How's that going to affect that area when it comes to flooding? That's my main concern.
Mr. Ruggeri, would you, I think of the, of the eighty-eight acres, about two-thirds of it is, is the pond, is the water. So let's get that straight to begin with. You're talking how many acres of net?
Yes, probably about twenty, at most, yeah.
So, Mr. Woods, it's about twenty acres. It's not eighty-eight. Most of it is the lake. Come on back up to the podium. Come on to the mic.
Three hundred and eighty possible homes.
So you're talking about twenty acres that can be built on?
Twenty acres, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Not, not eighty-eight. But I mean, it's a total of eighty-eight.
Okay. I mean, I, I was based off on what was given. The number was given, eighty-eight acres.
Yes, sir. You can put that map back up and show them. Okay. Battery ran out, huh?
Okay, but the creek, so you're telling me the creek takes up sixty?
The lake.
The lake, the lake takes up sixty. Okay, okay.
And sir, it's a, it's a very contemporous, it's a good question. If, in past years, you could be on Oaks Road and see a beaver dam between Oaks Road and that lake. And so, nature has elevated the height of that lake and the hydrology, that whole area, by that beaver dam being there. And so, part of the abate, you know, the drainage problem, that whole area, is in conjunction with environmentalists and everything else from Neuse River to that lake. How zealous is the city, what, how proactive do they want to be in, in beaver abatement? That's the problem. That's why that whole area stays up high.
Okay, we're doing it now.
Yeah.
So the beavers is the reason that we, what I'm understanding there is the beavers is the reason why.
That certainly is a lot of issues. Mr. Asher, you, you actually were kind of like the public works director at one time, but so, could you?
Well, I know, and George might be better than me, but I know that we have a person on staff that is licensed and certified to take, to help relocate beavers. And they are constantly doing it.
So that is, that is some of that. Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that I support my fellow colleague, Alder, Alderwoman Bass, in regards to her concerns with flooding. I mean, what we experienced last year was catastrophic, and I don't know the process. I would say that I'm a little ignorant to how the Planning and Zoning Board operates. But during the time of the presentation, were these questions, or have these questions been brought up or addressed in regards to when you fill out the application of wanting to be rezoned? Do you have a conversation of what the possibilities that, that applicant would like to do with that land? Because I feel like, if these questions were addressed, the ones that she had, I think it'd be a little bit more easier for us to, you know, move, for me, move forward with it, but again, I would hate to vote yes. And then down the line, we really don't have any say-so in regards to the private road, how the traffic is going to flow and whether the development is going to cause added on flooding to the areas if we were to get flooded again.
I, I think, I'm sorry, I, I think that we let our concerns be known to Mr. Ruggeri and the city manager as well. And I know that they have a very detailed departmental review where the applicant or the contractor would have to come and sit down in front of all of the city staff, the department heads or representatives from the staff, and these questions will be addressed at that time.
Would there be additional, you know, conditional use permits or special use permits that would be necessary to bring whatever development is going to happen there back to the board? Because that would be the time where we could potentially stop it. The rezoning now is just an issue of rezoning it. You know, technically, and, and Mr. Davis, you can correct me if I'm not, we're not supposed to ask the question of what is going to be put there? Is that correct? Or am I off base on, I'm not sure how that works for zoning?
Yes, ma'am. The board is to consider all possible uses allowed in a C three.
But you don't have to have a specific, are you allowed to ask what the specific?
You can ask all you like, but it doesn't mean it will happen.
Right.
It means the owner can put anything in there that is allowed in a C three. So it could be a gas station today and tomorrow a mall.
If it's allowed in that.
Allowed use, yes, ma'am.
Okay. But is there a conditional use for any kind of permits that would be required for this, whatever development Mr. Heisen would want to put on there to come back to the Board of Alderman for, I guess, you know, our scrutiny or, or debate?
Special use permits do not go to the Board of Alderman. At this point, there would be no other interaction with the board after the rezoning. It would simply go to site plan review and building permit.
So it's just departmental review where it could be stopped or questioned or whatever?
Correct.
Would you just make sure that during the departmental review that they, that these questions are addressed?
Sure.
So, are you?
We have these conversations every two weeks.
Is your department the final say on whether it moves forward or not?
My department is, we administer the site plan review process.
Okay.
So we collect comments from every other department in the city and, and state representatives also. If it stops any, any one of those, the, the process stops until the problem gets solved. So it's not my department that stops it, it's other, it's whatever the issue may be. Sometimes it's a driveway cut, sometimes it is drainage. There's, there's a lot of different things that can get in the way.
Got you, thank you.
Mayor, members of the board, I just want to be clear. We're leaving the impression that this is a discretionary process, and it's, it's not at all. It's, it's a legal process. So when you own the property, you look at the city code and you have to comply with every legal provision in the code. And when you do that, you will get your development permit. So staff works with developer, working through the code, checking all the boxes, making sure that the stormwater regulations are complied with. But once all those things are done, then the permit is issued. It's not a question of what does staff think or like. There is some of that, just in common sense, but, but ninety-nine percent of it is checking all the boxes to make sure that the project complies with the law, and stormwater runoff is a big part of our law.
Alderman Bass, I just want to mention this. Mr. Tyson is unable to be here tonight, but he's watching it and has just texted me, and he would be okay with us postponing it or whatever. I don't know how that process, how you would want to do that, if we didn't want to vote on it, if you feel uncomfortable. He is, he understands there's questions and he's happy to answer them.
We have a, we have a couple of home that want to speak, but right now we're under the public hearing, and if anybody else in the public would like to come forward and ask any questions, you're more than free to do that. At that time, we'll close the hearing and then the board will make other comments and questions. Mr. Duffy?
Just a quick comment, you know, so I actually spoke in favor of.
Name of the, Mike Duffy, Trappist Creek, right in that area, you know, so you saw something on the map. I spoke in favor of, you know, having some business opportunities in stores and so and so forth in that area at the meet, at the hearing of the zoning commission. And, but at this point in time, since you guys have a reservation, I have some additional ones about the drainage and the amount of hardening over there that, that might include. I think, I like the idea of postponing and let, let Mr. Tyson an opportunity to explain a little further what he'd like to do.
Okay. Now, are there other, any other resident citizens would like to come forward, ask questions or anything about this? We're still have, we, we have a public hearing open, and if there aren't, we'll, we'll close the hearing, but again, if anybody would like to come forward.
Mayor, excuse me, just, just to be clear, if, if the board is inclined to take more evidence, then you'll want to continue this public hearing rather than close it. Once you close it, there's no further opportunity to offer evidence for your considerations.
Okay. And the board might have questions concerning what the attorney said?
On the, the tracks separates that property on the side that is low. Do you know the elevations on the low side and the high side? Because normally, when we've had storms in the previous years or just here recently, the water didn't go over the tracks. It remained on one side. So. It remained on one side, so, um, the flow of water, would water flow still on the side of the track, which will be the left side? And is, is this pipes draining at all, if they are?
Right now it drains into Jackson Creek, and that's, I'm assuming, any development, that's where it would continue to drain. It's tough to buck that trend.
Alderman, uh, do you have a question?
Um, question coming. Appreciate the concerns that's being expressed, although this is always a tricky one as a board, because we're supposed to look at the evidence in front of us about whether or not this zoning fits inconsistent with the neighbor. The reason I asked the question earlier about, uh, does the zoning necessarily dictate how much impervious surface is allowed? And the reason I was asking that is because theoretically, the owner of this property now could go through the development review process, build a structure on that property that would meet development review process, that could have more impervious surface than what this new, this new zoning would allow. So from my standpoint, I don't think that this rezoning is going to have any bearing on whether or not there's gonna be additional burden put on the neighbors. That's the staff review process that we have in place to address that. It's gonna be the same review process with the current zoning or with the new zoning. The new owner or the owner is going to have to be responsible for maintaining the stormwater runoff for whatever structure they decide to build. So with, with that being said, I appreciate the owner speaking up and saying he's okay with us delaying it. I think that these issues and concerns that have been addressed are very valid and relevant, and would be something that would be discussed through the development review process. But as far as our action tonight, it's whether or not this zoning is consistent with what's around there.
Okay, Alderman Asher.
I, I agree, Jeff. I, I believe it's our job to, uh, just make sure that the zoning is consistent at this time. I have faith in the departmental review, that they will have our, um, questions and concerns addressed. And have we closed the public hearing?
No, uh, no, we're still, uh.
Okay, and I would, I reckon I have a two-part, so I would like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Hold on, just a second. Mr. Davis, do you, for any reason, see that we need to continue this hearing, uh, or close it?
Well, that.
We have a hundred more comments.
That is the question, that is the question, yes, sir.
Well, let me tell you some of what's going on here, and, and, uh, I hate to digress, but it's part of the bigger picture. We're a year from, out from Hurricane Florence. This board has not had a workshop about drainage. And there's issues such as freeboard and lack of base flood elevation, uh, being elevated by the government. And, uh, there's issues of, of if we, if, if the government doesn't do anything, and we go to a, one more foot of freeboard to eleven, then the concern of the citizens is that if you're gonna elevate my neighbor's property, you're gonna put it on me. There is Lumber River in Robinson County right now is being dredged, yes. Army Corps Engineers proved it. And there are other rivers like the Tar River that are trying to be dredged, because basically you could put a soybean, soybean field in the middle of Tar River in places. And so, you know, there's so many issues right now that cannot be answered tonight, and part of that is fact that this board is a year out and has not had any type of workshop about all the dynamics of, of elevating homes and impervious surfaces, uh, higher, and where the water's going. And truth of the matter is that if you can dredge, um, uh, the Lumber River, you might be able to dredge Rennie's Creek and solve some of those issues that have been there forever. So, again, I don't think we're gonna solve all of those problems tonight, but they are the questions and the concerns of the board and the citizenry as we move forward, as we try to grow neighborhood. Or do we wanna, because of, uh, uh, lack of, of activity on the part of federal government as far as what's gonna happen with base flood? Do we wanna just, we won't stop growing enough, so.
Well, my concern is here, when we're talking about the consistence, you know, the consistency to, uh, zoning this, is the fact that I don't know how long the Meadows subdivision has been there. And I've had numerous people come to me, talking to me about, okay, that was a zoning that whatever board was in place at that time passed for that zoning of Meadows. And then we see that Meadows, that right there is an example of all the water flooding in on the surrounding citizens, residents. So this is the same problem that I'm thinking, I feel that it's gonna be the same problem with this development here on Simmons Street. North Hills Drive is right behind it. Simmons Street's on one side, the whole area's been flooded. But I understand that this is, you're saying that this is not the time to talk about that. But if this zoning, I just don't feel comfortable with this zoning right now. And I would really like for Mr. Tyson to have an opportunity to speak with us, to speak with me about this parcel and this rezoning before I make a vote on this.
Alderman here, Alderman here.
Yeah, I just, I want to, um, echo what, what, um, Alderman Best said in regards to the fact that, um, so it's a clear understanding that I am not in opposition of growing our city and, uh, creating some sort of affordable housing, whether it's market rent, HUD, whatever the case may be. It's the fact that we have questions, and as elected officials and people come to you and question the agenda items, it's our responsibility to have these questions presented to the departments. That does not mean that we have a lack of support for the departments to do their job in the review, but we need to make sure that we're letting our concerns be heard. And I feel like if Mr. Tyson has contacted Alderman Bingo and stated that he's willing to allow us to postpone it, whether it's a pu- public meeting or it's, uh, a meeting with a few people that have concerns, for him to answer a few questions before it's brought back and voted on, on the agenda, I think that we should, you know, be able to do that.
So you're saying you all want to table this tonight?
Or continue, continue.
I would continue, so we can have a conversation with Mr. Tyson.
Yes, sir, okay. Alderman left.
What is it currently zone?
It's a majority C five with a small section.
And give me some examples of what he could build there without even coming to the board tonight?
Um, so a majority is C five, so you can do your single-family residences, your duplexes, apartments are a special use permit. You do homes for the handicapped or infirm, this is by right stuff. Bed and breakfast you could do. Childcare homes, um, a physician's office, obviously, like things like that, attorney's office, um, government buildings. Not more than, offices or clinics, not more than ten thousand square feet. Banks with drive-throughs.
It sounds like it's basically the same thing, it's.
It's a little less, like I said in the, in the presentation, C five is, uh, meant to be kind of a transitional area between residential and more densely commercial industrial areas, so it's a little less intense.
I understand. And, and city, Mr. City Attorney, we're not even supposed to be considering this during this, are we?
The, the actual use, the actual proposed use is not relevant to the question of whether all possible uses are compatible with the surrounding zones.
So as, as long as he can check off each one of those blocks, we legally cannot change it. And if he checked off each one of those blocks, so we should.
Well, this, this is a legislative question at this point for the board. To, to, to give you an easy example, if we had a residential community like Taberna, and someone proposed to take a residential lot and make it commercial in the middle of a residential area, that would be incompatible with the surrounding zones. That's an easy example of bad idea, the city shouldn't do it. If there are surrounding industrial and, and commercial zones next to the proposed rezoning, then it is a bit logical that changing from a C five to a C three is not a big leap. But that's a legislative question for the board.
Well, I'm just a little confused on the issue, because we previously at another meeting on Oaks Road, when they wanted to rezon and turn, and we asked them what it was gonna be, and he said a tobacco shop. We all voted unanimously to not do it, so I don't understand why it's an issue or concern that we may wanna know what's gonna go there because of how much the acres are and the possibilities of the land and things that we experienced last year. And that's not directed towards you, I'm just saying that, you know, 'cause Bobby, you were bringing up, but we've, in the past during these, have asked the applicants what is possibly gonna be there, so I don't know why it's an issue tonight. I don't, if, if Mr. Tyson.
Well, the difference was he was putting a commercial property between two residentials, and it wasn't consistent with the.
But that's what the zoning, the zoning approved it, and we said no. So what I'm stating is if Mr. Tyson texts her and said that he's willing to allow us to postpone it because we have some concerns, a lot of, you know, what Barbara is speaking of, why can't we go ahead and postpone it and have that meeting with him?
I'm okay with postponing, but what are you gonna ask him?
She just.
Are you gonna ask him what he's gonna build there? Because he may not know. He may not have any idea what he's gonna put there. He's just trying to get zoning, and he can, he can already put a whole bunch of stuff there that Jeff just pointed out, that we don't even have to have any comments about. I mean, he can do it now. Only thing we're doing now is saying that the zoning to C three is consistent with the surrounding area.
Which allows more opportunity for other things.
But it, it is consistent, and that's what they, that's what the, the, uh, Jeff and his department have, have proven and recommended. It is consistent with this.
Citizens have contacted Alderman or other Alderman in concern with flooding or the possibility of a multi-unit. Isn't it not her responsibility as an elected official to bring those questions to the board and her colleagues to see if there could be a resolution in, in the conversation? Again, he stated he has no problem with it being postponed for her to ask her questions, and I don't mind being there if she needs a second. But she has that right, and if he's willing to do that, then can we make the motion to postpone if we have four, so that we can move on to the next agenda item?
Can I ask another question again? Help me understand something. So, the difference between the five and three is that he can build multifamily, he can build apartments in three, he can't build them in five?
He'd have to get a special use permit in five.
But you wouldn't in three?
You would not in three.
So is it that much harder to get a special use permit? That's what I'm, you know, so I'm trying to understand what was the need to change it to three, to do something that he can al- already do in zoning that he has. So that's what I'm just trying to figure out. I don't see the, too much of the difference, 'cause if he's gonna do a dense.
It's a different process, right? It's just, uh, it's out of.
He doesn't have to go through that long process of the special.
Another process, correct?
Okay.
It's a much more detailed, um, application for Board of adjustments and get a special use permit than it is for a rezoning.
This is the easy way out.
Please, a legal question, uh, Mr. Davis. Uh, if we continue to public hearings and the motion passes, and then the board, after the continuance is issued, if the board then approves the zoning, rezoning, doesn't that usurp the continued, continuation of the hearing?
If, if you continue the hearing, you will not vote tonight on, on the rezoning.
Okay, we won't vote at all, so that will.
But you could close the public hearing.
Yes.
You could close the public hearing and, and table the vote, so you could split the difference. In other words, you could table them both, continue the hearing, table the vote, or you could close, um, close the hearing, but table the vote the next time for individual Alderman to speak to the owner.
But if you, if you close the public hearing tonight, the board does, and then the board?
The board could vote after that.
The board votes against it, then meetings later, can another public hearing be open?
There's a, I, I don't recall, Mayor, with the ordinance, there's a delay, um, if you're denied a rezoning.
A thirty-day delay or something?
It's more than that, I wanna say, yeah.
Okay.
And, and there's got, then there's got to be a reason why it's coming back. You just can't keep asking every six months.
Okay, and one other question for you, or the departmental review. I thought that when you have a property with two different zonings, that the larger majority zoning in the case of somebody wanting to make an improvement, took precedent over the smaller zone. That's not true.
No, sir, the, the.
Is that ever true in?
No, sir. The, the, the zone itself controls. You can have one track of land, you can have a hundred acres with three different zones that cross that hundred acres, and each space within that zone must comply with that particular zone.
Okay, so if you get a residential lot, R ten, three-quarters of it, and a, and a quarter of it was C three.
Right.
You would have to rezon the C three portion, or would the R ten take?
You could, it depends on where you're putting the house.
Oh, okay.
You can put the house, you can put the house on both, but you couldn't put the gas station on the residential portion.
Well, I asked that with regards to the right-way Oaks Road, that's why I was asking that question.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Mr. Woods, we're still in the public hearing, you're more, welcome next question.
I'm just a train of thought, I've heard Alderman ask, ask the question. How many, this is to staff, how many, or are there any C three lots close in close proximity of this property? And if so, how close?
I believe industrials. Jeff, is industrial next door?
Yeah.
These are the same questions we had, and they told us the same thing from Carolina, have you questioned, people questioning the zoning?
So the site here, again, C four, we have C five across the street, C three at the intersection of Oaks and Simmons, C three across the street, adjacent to the parcel, we have industrial, industrial, and that's a weird industrial here, um, or C three. So it is, it's a hodgepodge of the area, you see that a lot of older parts of town that really just haven't, um, developed in a consistent manner. So, again, it's a little bit everything.
Mr. Roger, can we just take your pen and kinda outline the lake area?
The lake itself.
Because there's not a whole lot of land associated with this.
Yeah, so the lake is here, with the upland being here.
And I, I'm not a hydrology expert, Mr. Charles, but I, I would venture to think that there's several different lakes out in there, and that whole area, uh, right back to the rock quarry is determined by man and culvers that are already in place and natural things like beavers. So, again, you know, the other interesting thing about that parcel property is when that quarry was dug, and that area that you just asked, just land, a lot of that is backfill from that lake. And a lot of that is already purpose. Uh, again, I'm not a soil expert, but that backfill is, is soil and subsoil conditions skimmed off and put over there. Probably limestone, marble i- is in there too. So, you know, there's, again, so many issues. This is just an example of development in New Bern. Some stuff's natural, some, some parcels are backfilled, and the whole issue of impervious surface on that is that probably somewhat right now, you're getting the same amount of stormwater runoff to that lake that you're gonna give with a canopy of a bunch of roofs over there, because that, that property was backfilled with marble and other things out of that lake. So the question is, is do you wanna grow your city and increase tax base and help the regional hospital and other things grow? Not that that's what's going on there, or do you want every time we get a piece of property that needs zoning, do you wanna just stop development? And that, that's a great question. Chapel Hill has answered that question by firing the past mayor, put one in place to stop it. And that might be what the public and when you vote a couple of years from now wanna do, but I wanna grow the city myself.
I wanna grow the city as well, but I don't want it to be where it's gonna, you know, a, a project of this size coming there and it's gonna continue to dump water on the citizens already there. I mean, maybe that's something that we need to do. We need to change our, uh, our zoning ordinance, or whatever we need to do for a project that's gonna come to this city.
Mr. Charles, could you come up a minute? I do have a, a question. Is the, is, is the drainage and delineation of drainage between this, this parcel, Rennie's Creek and the Neuse River, is it a total separate dynamic from the amount of winds which, metal lands which, um, it drains into the main canal?
It drains directly in Rennie's Creek.
That pumps out with the pumps. Is that a separate issue?
Uh, yes, yes, and even North Hills is not affected by Rennie's Creek.
So because of the demarcation of the railroad roadway and all that material, and all that backfill in that railroad was built, does that not preclude any water coming out of this lake other than way down into the? other than way down into the lower reservoirs?
The, the downfall of the original mine, I believe, was all discharged through Renice Creek. And I believe that's probably the way the intent's gonna be when they design any development in this site. All of the impervious will run into the pond. It'll discharge out Renice Creek, which then flows directly into the Neuse River.
And because of that railroad right away, none of this water, I'm not saying none of it, but the great majority of it is, again, repeat that in layman's terms.
It, the wa- the water from, from that mine quarry pit should all discharge through Renice Creek. It should not affect anything in North Hills or any other.
And all North Hills and Meadowlands goes to the twenty-one thousand gun pumps.
It, it goes down and under the railroad track through pumps and then back up, yes, unfortunately.
And is the issue of the, of the trust, of the culverts under that cemetery extension in any way a problem with the drainage? Other than the fact that Odom, uh, Alderman Odom and I have personally visited that site and there's a lot of silt buildup in that retention pond, that twenty-five year event retention pond. So there's other issues associated with why that's not drained properly. But again, back, is the cemetery extension culvert properly sized at, at present time to pull all that water?
From North Hills?
Yes.
Um, it, it's more of a grade issue to get it out of North Hills. Now, there is some, some aging that's gone on with the culvert there on Simmons Street that we have discussed with DOT about, about that culvert. But I don't believe it's a sizing issue and it's an elevation issue to get it down. And then we're limited by our ability to get it through the railroad tracks and, and get it back to the well. And so, uh, but, but this quarry, it should not be associated with the North Hills or anything on the other side of railroad tracks drainage wise.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mayor, for explaining that. I wish you had explained that a little earlier to, to us. And you, Mr. Ch- and you, Mr. Childs, for, you know, reiterating what he has asked. Because now I'm, I'm understanding a little bit more about that area for is the drainage is concerned. Cause that was my main concern.
Yes, ma'am. Can I make the motion to close the public hearing? We still have a discussion afterwards, ma'am. I'd make a motion to close the public hearing. Mike. Okay.
I think that if you would have to look. Mike Duffy again from Trappers Creek. Between the blue land and the yellow land where the residential area is in there in Trappers Creek and, um, the single family homes in the hood. Remis Creek is in reality far larger than what's shown there. About sixty percent of that land at least, I mean, you guys have an opportunity to look at it on, you know, Google Earth, is wet all the time. It's essentially an extension of Trappers Creek, of, of Remis Creek. So Remis Creek is not just the little creek, you know, so it's like well over a hundred, a hundred, two hundred. All of that is, except the, I don't know if you can see the little horseshoe there, which is where I was actually. It's, it's further away from me, but where the creek is itself behind those single family ha- homes, all of that is wet all the time. Their backyard, beyond their property line, there, there is no driveway. It's there all the time. It's marshland. And it's, it's essentially Remis Creek. Now, where I am, I live in the horseshoe, so it's far further away from my home. It's at least two hundred feet away from my home. But, but where, where that ends and then, you know, the street curves away, it's right up against the back of the lots. Not flowing, which is stationary, you know, essentially marshland.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Yeah, motion second, close the public hearings are for discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution rezoning or consider adopting, pardon me?
Oh, he was shaking his head.
Yeah, A first.
I got you. Consider adopting a statement of zoning of consistency with, for seventeen oh one Simmons Street. Is that correct, Mr.?
Yes.
Second.
Yeah, but motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
No.
Alderman Beagle?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, is it, you gonna make, well, um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we consider adopting an ordinance rezoning part of seventeen oh one Simmons Street uh, from C four neighborhood business district to C five office and institutional district to C three commercial district.
Second.
We have motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Beagle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
No.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
No.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm number thirteen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm number thirteen. It's consideration of the board to adopt a resolution in support of an EDA resiliency grant application for an electric substation. Uh, Public Utilities desires to apply for grant funding from the FY two thousand nineteen disaster supplemental funds and seek support of this application. If the grant is awarded, funds will be utilized to construct a new electric substation in the area of County Line Road. Grant funds are estimated to be, uh, ten million dollars and a twenty percent match. I guess that would be the project would be ten million dollars. A twenty percent match of that would be required, so eight million dollars of that coming through EDA funds and two million dollars would be the match of the city. Uh, the city can match that, uh, with either cash, bonds, or other in-kind services. Um, most likely the in-kind services may not be quite the option to go with. More than likely, it would be cash or bonds. Uh, there's a memo that's included in your package from, uh, our Director of Public Utilities, Mr. Bouchard, and, uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I do, I have a question.
Sure.
At what area is the County Line Road?
Uh, County Line Road, uh, the, I guess the general area that they're looking at would be at the end of Old Airport Road at County Line Road.
And this is what, um, our Director of Utilities has recommended that we do to relieve some of the power problems that we may eventually get.
Ultimately, yes, sir. Uh, what this will do is relieve some of the, um, capacity issues that we have at both the Lewis Farm Road Station, which is down closer to Havelock, and also the Trent Road Substation that we have closer into town. So obviously, as you know, the Trent Road Station, uh, it has feeders that run through and, and all the way into downtown, uh, over into some of the James City area. Um, and then ultimately, the Lewis Farm Station comes up all the way up with feeders from Havelock uh, on both sides of the road. That would be that Highway seventy west and the, the old Cherry Point Road, um, feeders that we have coming up through there. So ultimately, what this will do is, uh, prepare ourselves for growth, one. Two, the main thing with the EDA resiliency grant is when we had our Blue Sky outage and we have hurricane, uh, related outages, it will allow us, uh, a, a way in which we can backfeed the system to provide power in some of these communities and bring them back online while we're making repairs at other feeder lines that may be fed through either Lewis Farm or Trent Road. So it allows some, some, uh, ability for us to be a little bit more transformative, if you want, uh, as far as our system and being able to bring power from different directions.
I hate to even bring this up, but, and whatever Charlie recommends, and he's, I, I'm in favor of, but, um, where you're locating this thing, have you taken into consideration that that area floods really bad? That bridge on County Line Road as well as the, uh, Old Airport Road Bridge is impassable?
We, we have not procured any property at this time.
Okay.
Um, we have property in the County Line Road area that we're very interested in. We still need to determine if it's suitable, but yes, we have, those concerns are on the forefront of our mind to check those out and make sure, or we can get access to the substation during all periods of time and get lines out of the substation.
Yeah.
One of the things that we have prepared for in the development of, um, the further development on, on Old Airport Road in that area, especially with the Blue Water Rise Project, was, uh, the underground, uh, piping of our electric system through there. So that was kind of pre-planned. There's, those, those items are in place. So a lot of that system at that point would be somewhat protected until it gets passed that way closer up towards Evans Mill and the Brys Creek area. And then it goes back to Ariel. But one of the things too that's kind of, uh, important in the design of that station at that particular location is, uh, a relatively, uh, quick, uh, run through to tie into the Duke system so that we can get the transmission line into that tran- uh, into that, uh, station.
I tr- I trust your judgment. I just wanted to make sure that, I know you're aware and the fire department and everybody else is aware that there was probably five foot of water over the bridge at Old Airport Road and the little bridge that's on, um, County Line Road was also flooded. So, but. Okay, Alderman Odom?
Um, would the acquisition of, the cost of the acquisition of the land be able to go toward the twenty percent match? Or does it have to be equipment?
No, it does not have to be equipment.
So if we have to spend two million dollars per se for the property, that can be our twenty percent match?
I believe so.
And conversely, if a donation of property from someone, the valuation of that property would also count toward that grant match, correct?
I'm not evaluating the grant, but I hope so. It's a nice idea.
All funds, I guess, taken off on that, um, all funds would come out of electric, correct? None out of, um, general funds and they're well suited to be able to do that. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They, they wouldn't come out of the general funds.
Understood, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, the electric.
The electric fund, enterprise fund is.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other conversation, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution in support of the EDA grant application for the electric substation.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Beagle?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm number fourteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, item number fourteen is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution approving the installation of an additional street light near nineteen oh one Garden Street. Uh, this request has come from Hazel Royal, the pastor of Abundant Life Miracle Center. Uh, they've requested this additional street light in the area of nineteen oh one Garden Street. Um, upon evaluating this request, Public Utilities found that the area met the established street lighting standard. However, the police department recommended, uh, for additional late night events and exiting the building in darkness, that this would, uh, prove to be an improvement in safety, uh, uh, for the, for those in that area. Uh, the estimated cost to Public Utilities to add the light is four hundred ninety-three dollars and twelve cents. And the estimated monthly cost for public works would be an additional eight dollars and forty-four cent per month. Uh, there's a copy from Mr. Bouchard of the memo and we'll be happy to answer questions.
Does the board have questions?
Mayor, the board doesn't have any questions. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the installation of an additional street light at nineteen oh one Garden Street.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion.
Mayor, just a comment. Um, I don't know when it happened, but the lights on Trent Road were replaced, the streetlights recently. I was driving downtown Friday night and I don't know if anybody's had an opportunity to do it, but obviously, I'm assuming it's the new LED lights. There's a major difference in how those lights operate. So the more that we can do of that, you know, definitely we need to continue with that. It was a great job.
Okay. Have a roll call starting with Alderman Beagle.
Alderman Beagle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm number fifteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number fifteen is request for the board to consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for the FY nineteen twenty annual operating budget. This budget ordinance amendment recognizes thirty-seven thousand dollars for repairs to the Cub House Welcome Center, uh, following a fire and an additional ninety-five thousand dollars for estimated costs associated with Kidsville two point oh. Uh, the Cub House funds represent twenty-seven thousand in insurance proceeds and ten thousand for the deductible, uh, which will be transferred from our contingency fund. Uh, the funds for Kidsville represent approximately sixty thousand dollars from fundraising and thirty-five thousand dollars to be transferred from contingency as well. Additionally, the amendment recognizes a five thousand dollar donation, uh, to purchase trash cans as part of the city's litter program. Uh, there's a memo that's included from the Director of Finance, Mr. Savatelli. We'll answer any questions.
Does the board have questions? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a budget ordinance amendment for the two thousand nineteen twenty annual operating budget.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, some roll calls starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw? Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Beagle?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm number sixteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number sixteen is request to consider adopting a resolution to, uh, request amendment to land use ordinance regarding bed and breakfast establishments. Uh, there's, uh, as you know, there's been some interest that's been expressed in possibly removing the special use permit designation for bed and breakfast establishments in the R six, R eight, and R ten zones. Uh, several folks spoke about that during the request petition of citizens. Uh, this resolution is to indicate the board's desire to move forward with amending, uh, the land use ordinance for this purpose, essentially, uh, restricting, uh, bed and breakfasts from being within those residential zones. Uh, primarily, that would be in the historic districts. Is that correct, Mr. Beagle?
Yes, sir.
So that would be the historic districts only, uh, that that would be taken out of, so.
I'm sorry, what was that? The historical district, that what?
You wanna add to that? That's correct. Just, just, just the residential zones within the two historic districts, downtown and Riverside.
That's where they'll be allowed?
They would not, they would, they're allowed now upon the issuance of a special use permit. If this proposed change goes through P and Z and back to you again, then they would be prohibited in those three zones.
Can you, um, advise me on when you were able to obtain a special permit use to turn your resident into, uh, B and B?
Uh, how long has this ordinance been in place?
Yes.
Decades?
Okay.
Many decades?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
In these districts, yes?
Yes.
May- maybe I just missed it, but in the resolution, I don't see a designation of just the historic districts. Can we make sure that is included? Because I don't want to restrict other zoning areas throughout the city for this if we're saying it's just for historic districts.
They're, they're not allowed anyway. They're pro- they're prohibited in residential zones.
In residential zones, so in commercial zones you can do it, correct?
Yes. Yeah, thi- this is what we're proposing to, to, to amend the table of municipal uses where B and Bs are allowed with the issuance of a special use permit. And there's only three locations that those are allowed, R six, eight, and ten, in the two historic districts. So when that's amended, B and Bs will not be allowed in any residential district, only commercial districts. In other words.
Within the historic district.
Correct, yeah. In other words, you cannot have a B and B in Taberna, a residential zone, or Greenbrier or Spencer Avenue area.
So how many B and Bs are currently in these historic districts right now?
I don't know the answer to that.
I think permitted, maybe four.
So if this was to pass, they won't be grandfathered in?
They, they will be.
They would be, but no more can come in?
No more can come in. Correct.
But why, why, why is this, why you don't want no more to come in? Say if I just came here to visit the town and I decide I, I love it so much and I wanted to, uh, open up one, so you're telling me I can't do it. Is that it?
No.
It, it, it is. In, in a residential zone, you could not do that.
I mean, that's what the people spoke in favor of today, right?
So what you're saying, that's what you want us to pass tonight where you can't do that?
Well, that, that's, let's kind of unpack this. There's a, a number of steps. And I just want to be clear on, on what the law currently is. The law currently does not allow a B and B to locate in Taberna, as an example. It cannot be there.
We're not talking about Taberna, we're talking about the historic district.
That's right. The historic district, which is zoned just like Taberna, does allow B and Bs upon the issuance of a special use permit. Okay? So the proposed change would be to make the historic districts just like Taberna, residential only. Now, tonight, so that's step one. Step two, tonight, this just starts the process for consideration. Tonight doesn't do anything. It just sends the request to the Planning and Zoning Board to take up the issue and make a recommendation back to you, this board. That will happen in six to eight weeks. At that point, when it comes back before you, with whatever recommendation P and Z might make, you will have a public hearing required by law and you will make a decision to make the change or not make the change.
Okay, so, um, the issue I wanna know is what made it become an item on the agenda? Were there complaints? Were there concerns on both sides? Because previous on, an item prior to, we're, you know, having a discussion on, on the growth of New Bern, why would we sit here and hinder someone from starting a B and B in historic district if it's R? why would we sit here and hinder someone from starting a B and B in historic district if it's already in, in the ordinance? Why would we, why would we change that if it's already been there for decades? Unless it's, you know, a, a big issue.
I'm going to explain what the citizens are telling me, just as in your neighborhood or anybody else's, Taberna. They're saying they bought in neighborhoods, and for years, I don't know why, I don't know why. For years, the thought was no B and Bs were allowed north of Broad Street. There has never been a B and B on the other side of Broad Street, except in the last three, three to four years. Even though it's been on the books, nobody, there's not been one. They've been relegated to Pollock Street pretty much in that area. Then this started to come out, and the residents have complained. They don't want it, they say they bought in a residential neighborhood, they don't want a commercial, quote unquote, commercial business in there. So it was relegated to the fact that you, these were operating without a special use permit. So Development Services in the last two years went and found out where these people were operating, told them they had to go through the process of a special use permit. So about four to five of them went through that process, followed the process and did it. And we continued to get complaints from the citizens. Finally, a month ago, I had a group of citizens from Metcalf Street approach me again in group to say they do not want this in their neighborhood.
So how does that change the situation if the ones that are already there that are grandfathered in, that means they're going to continue to conduct business?
That's correct. They don't want any more because they're concerned that houses on either side of them for sale, so is every other house going to be that? That doesn't constitute a neighborhood. Earlier this evening, we heard Chief Summers say, you should know who your neighbor is. That makes a good neighborhood and it protects your neighborhood. If you don't know who's coming and going, that's the concern of the neighbors. I'm not saying, that's my personal opinion, that is the concern of the neighbors. So as the representative of the two historic districts that these would be in, the citizens are telling me they want to strengthen the residential neighborhood.
Okay, and what's the concerns of the residents that own these historic homes that went and got their special permit?
They, they're grandfathered in, they, that's what they wanted to do, they followed the process. I respect the fact that they followed the process, they upheld the law, and they did what they were supposed to do. I have no issue with that. But before it gets out of hand, I, I have, I have concerns.
Chief, have you had any complaints with any of those people that has been living in bed, bed and breakfast, shooting, drugs? Have you had any of those type of problems out of those people?
To the best of my knowledge, the only complaints I can recall are parking type complaints.
Just parking.
I, I reckon you have to take in consideration what the young lady said tonight with the two small children. You know, how would you like to live beside a piece of property that every night a stranger is there? You have no clue who he is, he's not your neighbor, or he or she, they're not your neighbor. You know, you don't know what they are, and you've got two small children that like to play out in the front yard. So, you know, considering that, I, I am in favor of, of, of this. And, you know, I, I just don't think it's a proper neighborhood setting for you to have a couple of strangers in and out every day, not knowing who they are.
Okay. Couple things. So I'm still struggling with, is it in our ordinance somewhere that says bed and breakfasts are permissible if you go through a special use permit only in the historic districts?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because it's not here, and that's what I'm struggling with. What I'm looking at just basically says, the table of permissible uses code ordinance, City of New Bern, to remove the special use permit designation for category one point five two oh bed and breakfasts in the R six, R eight, and R ten zones.
Yes, sir. And the ordinance has an asterisk by six, eight, and ten that says footnote, in the historic district only.
Okay, so that helps me with that one?
Yes.
I appreciate what Alderman Astor said, but this is also similar to noise. Those folks that purchased those homes purchased in an area that has an asterisk beside of it that says this is permissible. So I want to make sure we're clear on that, that when they purchased that, that was permissible. My, my last question, I know I'm really opening up a can of worms on this one. Can you explain to me what this is going to do in relation to short-term rentals, AKA Airbnbs?
Yes, okay. Understand too, I just want to make sure, Airbnb is nothing more than a marketing designation.
That's why I say short-term rentals.
It is a marketing designation, so don't be confused with that terminology. The two issues, if you live in a home and you rent out rooms, so you reside in the home and you rent out rooms, you would be considered a B and B per our zoning, you would be considered a bed and breakfast. If you do not live in the home, it is a piece of rental property or property for you, then we have no designation. If you rent it for one night, five nights, one month, five months, whatever, that's the issue that the state is fighting with, because those places are advertised on Airbnb, or VRBO, or Home Away From Home. So it is very confusing, but it doesn't make it an air, it make, Airbnb is a marketing tool. Like it's a Facebook, or a Twitter, or Instagram, something like that.
So, so to be clear, that the action in front of us tonight is to stop, if it moves forward, if we go through this process and it passed all those different benchmarks, this is to stop an official bed and breakfast where a homeowner or the owner of that residence lives there and rents rooms out. What we're not doing is anything about somebody who goes and buys that same house and rents it out to a different person every night that could have four cars that need a place to park. We're, that still is, is outside of this purview of what we're talking about tonight.
Cool.
Yes.
So...
Generally, yes.
So if we were to change it, there's nothing stopping someone from doing exactly what I feel a B and B is. You're allowing someone to run out a couple of days, you don't know who these individuals are, they can have multiple cars.
And the only reason I bring that up is because I, anytime we do something, there's always this perception of what we're talking about. It's very confusing. I mean, we sit here, this is our job, we do this. But for folks to sit out there and hear, well, they're going to take some action that's going to stop these strangers from being next door to me, that not, doesn't necessarily mean that's going to happen, because that stranger next door to them could be renting that house on a nightly basis.
If they don't live there, if they don't live there.
Correct.
Okay.
So what, what we're talking about is saying that even if you live there, we also want to stop that as well.
Correct. You know, it's interesting, if you read, there's articles all over, I mean, Google, Google it, and there's trouble. You're getting more and more cities that are in the same conversation we have, and then are trying to restrict them now because of the many problems. Especially, of course, this is not the case here in college towns and whatever, because people are renting the houses out. Things are happening in neighborhoods. You know, I, I've always felt that as an alderman, it's my job to strengthen our neighborhoods. People buy homes regardless of, you know, they buy homes with their hard-earned savings, and that's their livelihood in that home, and they want a strong neighborhood, and they buy for a reason. What makes Taberna any better, where you can't do anything like that, than downtown? Or Greenbrier, or anyplace like that? Now, Mr. Attorney, if somebody bought a house in Taberna and wanted to rent it out by the night, if they didn't live there, they could do that right now?
Uh, well, then we get into covenants, and I, and I don't know what, what Taberna's covenants provide, but they may, the covenants may preclude that. The problem with the older neighborhoods, you don't have covenants.
So they're almost, you know, discriminated against because they are an older neighborhood. And that's what I'm trying to, in listening to my citizens, protect the integrity of these older neighborhoods and not them becoming nightly rentals. You know, that's what happened in historic district years ago, that it was all rental property versus homeownership. And slowly but surely, it turned around, brought a lot of value to our city, and I don't want to see it turn like that.
And just to be clear, I have no issue with starting this process. It's going to allow the public ample opportunities from a P and Z standpoint, as well as this board public hearing, to hear what they have to say. Have no issue with that. I just want to make sure that the public doesn't think that what we're doing is going to be something that's going to, like the lady spoke earlier tonight, this is not necessarily going to change a stranger from being next door, and it's not going to cut necessarily traffic down from her street with her kids playing outside. That's, that's what I want to be doing.
But we still have the opportunity, I'd at least like for it to go through the process so the public can speak to it, because the next step would be planning and zoning with a public hearing where the public speaks to it. Then it still has to come back to us with a public hearing for the people to speak to it. So I say let it run its course and let the people speak to it so we can hear them versus stopping it now before we've actually heard from the citizens.
Okay, let me, Alderman Kinsey, you have something?
Yes. I mean, you know, people live in hotels that fight down here, people drive their car, they park, they walk. To me, it feels like that we're cutting off the freedom of what people wants to do. So a lot of people moved here from just stopping, spending the night, moving here a week or two, a month later, from just coming here and learning about the history, the great history that we have, that when they, when they wake up that morning, they get a chance to turn, to learn about a story about New Bern. New Bern has a great history, and it's being told. And I think that's something that we're doing away with. I just don't feel comfortable with this idea that we're trying to come up with. I mean, if you want to buy something, or move in, or travel, to spend a night, I think you should be able to do that.
We've got beautiful bed and breakfast downtown, but...
Let me get Alderman Best.
Well... Mayor, you said that you don't, we don't need to stop growth, want to stop growth in the city, and I feel that something like this would stop the growth in the city. But then again, too, I understand where Alderman Bingle's coming from when it comes to her constituents. But if this is within the special district area, the business area, I don't see why a bed and breakfast can't exist, especially if it's a legitimate business. I mean, that brings jobs to the city, it brings more revenue to the city. You know, we just talked about gr, growth of this city, but I'm just going to say, I'm, I'm just going to say this much. If somebody wants to move out beside me, they will have to move out beside me. I don't know who they are. I mean, you know what I'm saying? They could be a drug addict, they could be a drug dealer. I have no control over that. So, I mean, it's the same thing as Alderman, um, Odom said. We're going, you can still probably have some of the same issues with, within the special district area. So why, why would we want to eliminate a bed and breakfast from coming? I just haven't heard any vital, uh, I just haven't heard any vital information tonight to, to make me feel that...
Well, because we haven't allowed a public hearing.
I'm not finished yet, please, excuse me. Um, I just haven't heard any vital information yet to tell me that, um, I don't see why bed and breakfast should come to downtown New Bern. I mean, nobody's given me any, any information other than you don't want people living beside you that you don't know about. That's the same goes with me. There's people inside me I don't want, but what can I do about it? I have to fight for it.
It's in residential areas only, right?
Excuse me?
It's in residential areas only.
I, I know that. I'm just giving it as an example. It's the same thing downtown. Somebody may come in downtown and buy this property, and then you have people there you don't know about.
But it's allowed downtown, correct?
Right. If the individuals are allowed to get the permit, that's allowed where they are in the residential area. My, my thing to this is, is we talk so much about the downtown historic district and tourism, right? And we're concerned about growing our city. Who are we to hinder someone that owns a home that may want to turn it into a bed and breakfast? If they're allowed to get the permits now, and it's been like that for a decade, I would like to know, like she said, the vital information where it's a concern, outside of the fact, yes, we understand that children are there and people are coming in and out, but the same argument could be made with Airbnb, so. I understand it is marketing, and I get that, but the same process, you still have people that come to your house regardless if you live there or not. You don't know them, and they can have multiple cars, so it's, it's the same concept.
Look, I wear a lot of hats, and my other hat is the chair of the Tourism Development Authority, and I, no one knows and understands tourism and works with it as well. And I will tell you, the value of the bed and breakfast have been enormous in this community in growing travel and tourism. There's no doubt in my mind that they are one of the jewels in the crown that New Bern has, and because of, we're missing one hundred and seventy-one rooms right now from the Doubletree Hotel. This has been a benefit from us. The only reason I'm giving voice to this, the only reason I'm doing this is because the residents in the residential neighborhoods, not in C two, C three, you know, I see Jarvis' house represented here. She has an absolutely beautiful bed and breakfast that attracts a lot of people, as does the house next door, as does the Benjamin Ellis house across the street, as one goes down the other street. And they're the vital part of what we're talking about. But when residents come to me in residential neighborhoods and have concerns like that, I listen, and I am willing to support what they're saying. Again, I would ask that you allow this to move forward to the public stage so that the public can speak to this. I see no harm in letting this go to planning and zoning. This does not make it happen tonight. Let planning and zoning speak to it, allow the citizens to speak to it, and based on what they do, it'll still come back to us. With that being said, I would like to make a motion to consider a resolution to request amendment to land use ordinance, not adopt, but request amendment to land use ordinance regarding bed and breakfast establishments.
Second. Motion, second is their discussion.
Just, just to be sure, we've got P and Z, they will have to take this up, they'll have public hearing, they'll make their recommendation to us. We will then have a public hearing, and then we will have to make a decision.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I don't see any discussion, but I do want to say one thing. I've been in New Bern since nineteen sixty-eight, and I've seen a lot of good and bad things happen. And one thing good was the New Bern Preservation Foundation. And part of their goal was during World War Two and after, you know, a lot of this area became nice traditional historical homes that were, any way they could, they were made into two to four unit apartments. And it was all kind of, of activities. Actually, I remember the schoolmaster's house across from Central School. These were a lot of, of very high-density type rental units, and in many cases, I, I'm not particularly mentioning any one particular property, but many of them were not kept up very well. And the scope and goal and mission of the New Bern Preservation Foundation was to go in and set restricted covenants right down to the mantle on the fireplace that you couldn't touch. And what happened, not the first year, the first month, but over a period of years, people started feeling comfortable that there was a means by which their investment would appreciate quite a bit because of this, of the strength and the quasi-restricted covenants, or protection of a very historical neighborhood that had turned into a, a lot of rental units and a lot of different flavors of management and design. And so what, where we are today with property values in, in that particular area of town, you can thank the New Bern Preservation Foundation not much for that. And I'm not speaking for them, but I think that the goal of the New Bern Preservation Foundation was to establish strong residential neighborhoods like these areas for, for residential growth and residential investment.
Are there any other comments concerning this item? It's time to say a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries appointments, starting with Alderman Odom. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Discussion of options for board adjustment, Mr. Davis.
Yeah, Mayor, Mr. Board, you have before you some documents that summarize some, some thoughts about the board of adjustment. At the last meeting, you tried to bring back to you some observations about how we might improve the efficiency of our board of adjustments. There have been occasions in the last twelve months particularly where we've not had enough members to constitute a quorum. So I started with, you'll see on the first sheet in front of you, just a, a general survey of what I call our sister cities, cities of similar population with similar sized apartments. And I also include in there some neighboring cities, and then some cities that I consider these a little more progressive to see what everyone's doing. You'll see that New Bern stands out in this chart in terms of its, the size of its board of adjustment, as well as its quorum requirements. You'll see that most cities have a board size of five members. New Bern and Chapel Hill stand out as, as having a ten-member board. Those are regular... New Bern and Chapel Hill stand out as having a 10-member board. Those are regular members. The statute also allows cities to have alternates. Those are standby members. So in case a regular member cannot attend, there is an alternate that can take that person's place. New Bern and Chapel Hill have three alternates for a total possible membership of 13 members. The key distinction in, in New Bern's situation, and this is what's causing the primary problem for us, is that we require eight members present to constitute a quorum. Quorum is the minimum number of members that must attend to have a meeting, okay? Let's not confuse quorum with voting requirements. So if we don't have eight people show up at a board of adjustment meeting, there is no meeting. Other cities typically have three to five members to constitute a quorum. So with that simple analysis, we can, we can easily conclude that the first thing I would do to improve the efficiency of the board of adjustment is to reduce the quorum number from eight down to five members, okay? So that means if five people show up, we are gonna have a meeting. And that's been our problem lately is we'll have seven folks show up and without the eight, we can't have a meeting. Which means the applicants who expect time and money preparing their applications, pulling in their experts, can't have their meeting and they have to reload and pay for a whole new meeting. My other observation is that the number of members, regular members we have, is quite high compared to everyone else. My thought there would be to reduce the regular membership down from 10 to seven. On the second page, you'll see the membership of our board of adjustment. We currently have eight members out of 10 serving. Two have, two of our 10 have resigned, leaving us with eight members. One member will roll off June 30th of next summer of 2020. So one thought would be to reduce the quorum number from eight to five immediately. And by immediately, I mean this process will follow the bed and breakfast process. This, this resolution would go to P and Z. P and Z makes a determination, it comes back to you and you will make that decision. So when it comes back to you, you could reduce that quorum requirement immediately at that time from eight to five. Now we've solved a big problem very quickly. I would then suggest that you consider reducing the membership from 10 down to seven effective July 1, 2020. That way, no currently serving member would lose their position.
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If we were to reduce it down to seven, I see where it is by appointments. Is there supposed to be representation for every ward on that board?
That's a great segue. I'm gonna make a number of, if the board wants to go forward with this, I'm gonna make a number of policy recommendations to you at the very end of the process. One of those recommendations is to do away with the ward representation requirement and have it open to anyone who's qualified so that we can keep those boards fully functioning. We're having a problem with vacancies and a mandate that a member has to come from a particular ward and we're not fielding the most robust team because of that.
I think maybe, for me, I understand where you're coming from because of the frustration of having a quorum, but I think it's very important for us to have ward representation of individuals on this board specifically because it is a board of adjustments and that's a very important appointment to hold. So maybe there's a process or some way to kind of revamp and get people energized to want to be. And that may take some part of each individual Alderman. You know, it's our responsibility to find someone that needs to be appointed to this. But I just feel if we went away from the ward system, we may lack representation in different areas.
I have a question.
Mr. Attorney, when, when we say the ward representation, does the board of adjustments now, does that member have to come or live in that ward? They just have to be appointed by?
It's an appointment by ward.
So will we each still have the ability to?
Well, let's look at, let's take a big pause for a second. We're, we're way ahead of ourselves. What we're talking about tonight doesn't have to do, is not relate to the procedures that we might consider thereafter. This is a procedural issue as to how we appoint those members. It's a policy issue that you can decide later. As it currently stands, each board member and the mayor have an appointment to the board of adjustment. And that appointment can come from anywhere in the city as long as they are a city resident.
So as long as that's okay right now, we, we're not discussing that, I'm okay with it.
That's in place?
Starting the process, but when we get to it, that's gonna be one of my concerns.
That will be an item for discussion later.
That we still individually have the right to appoint someone.
I agree with you because I would love to have somebody from my ward to represent my ward on that plan, board of adjustment.
The, the second policy consideration that I'm gonna suggest to you at the end of the process is to also reduce the, the alternate members down from, from three down to two with, with a recognition that alternate members ought to be queued up to serve as regular members at the next opportunity. Right now, we don't have that in place. So if you're an alternate, you're forever the sixth man. You may never get in the game. You may be hovering for six years and never get to play. That makes no sense to me. And then at the end of that six years, you just go away. That person needs to get the ball and we're not thinking of it that way right now. So that would be another recommendation that I'll make to you. Again, not relevant to tonight's thinking about this.
Right.
Tonight's proposed resolution to you is, just like the B and B, is to potentially adopt a resolution for P and Z to consider reducing the board adjustment from, from 10 to seven, the alternates from three to two, and reducing the quorum from eight to five.
Okay, so it says, it says a discussion. Are we changing that? Do you just need direction?
Well, if you'll turn to the third page, you have a draft resolution before you to do just as I'm suggesting. I've also got on the fourth page, the same resolution with blanks. I propose to you, again, the 10 to seven for the regular, the three to two for alternates, and the eight to five for the quorum. That's just my recommendation to you. You could, you could obviously alter that any way you like tonight. My thinking was to start with this, see what P and Z comes back to. They may have different thinking on those numbers. And then in the end, you still have the freedom to do whatever you would like at the public hearing regarding the various numbers. But I, I think these numbers make some sense.
Yeah.
At least as a great first step with, with, in my mind, the quorum being the major move.
Right. I, I think I like the resolution. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. But I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to request amendment of land use ordinance with the second, the third page where it drops down from 10 to seven and the quorum be five and the alternates go to two.
Yes, ma'am. Second.
Is there discussion? You want to go ahead or I'm in?
Let's do it.
Roll call, roll call, starting with Alderman.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's go to the appointments. Alderman Odom?
No, it's a nicer.
Alderman Best?
Yes, I do. I would like to make a reappointment for Mr. Robert West to serve on the Police Service Board.
Second.
Motion, second, is there discussion? Say in all favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say aye. Motion carries.
I also need to make an appointment on the planning and zoning board. And I reached out to Mr. Jeffrey Midget and he says that it was a pleasure serving. He served for two terms, but he has another venture that he wants to, to embark upon. So I will be still asking if there's, and trying to find someone to fill that seat. That's all I have.
Alderman Best, I'd be happy to forward you a resume of someone that contacted me, Mr. Lee, who's currently an assistant superintendent at Creighton County Schools and he lives in the city limit. So I'd be happy to send you his information. He contacted me.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Kinsey?
No, sir.
And Alderman Astor?
No, sir.
Alderman, Alderwoman Harris?
No, sir.
Alderman Bingle?
No, sir.
Okay. This time, attorney's report.
Nothing to report tonight, ma'am.
City manager's report. Several items. Mayor, if you'll bear with me a little bit. First off, obviously, you know, we were impacted last week with Hurricane Dorian. I want to take the first part of my statements in thanking my staff for their hard and diligent efforts in their preparatory actions that were taken as well as their efforts throughout the storm. We, we dodged a bullet on that one, I think. We were very fortunate. We did have some impacts, some, some minor flooding in certain streets. We had to close a couple. We did have some, some damages throughout, some trees down, limbs down, things like that that we had to address. Primarily, it was wind-driven power outages that we experienced. I think the worst was about 14,300 customers, plus or minus just a little at one time. I think we saw that number somewhere around 7:00 a.m. on Friday and had everybody restored back pretty much by about 8:30 that night. So some very diligent efforts by our staff. Also want to take an opportunity to represent, or to also recognize those municipal, mutual aid opportunities that existed for the municipalities that helped us. We had folks from Shelby and Newton and Gastonia, Danville, Virginia. We had an Aslan crew from Wisconsin that came in. We had a couple other locations. I'm trying to remember them all. Pretty much, Gastonia, yeah. Quite a few, and if I'm, if I'm, if I'm missing some, I apologize. But we did have quite a few mutual aid crews in assisting us with restoration of power. And that was of significant benefit to us. And it actually, I think that's what expedited some of our restoration services in such a prompt manner. Appreciate the community bearing with us. Some of you may have seen also that there was a planned power outage for that Sunday that we were looking to do an improvement over on the Thurman Road area. And our staff took the opportunity of the power outage that was experienced down at our Lewis Farm Road Station to actually put a crew on that. And they went ahead and made that power outage so that, or that, that repaired it so we would not have to experience a power outage further on in the week to make that repair. So that's some good, good utilization of time spent by our staff making that repair. So we will have a blue sky outage, as we call it, or actually, that would have been a black sky outage because we were planning on doing it on a Sunday morning at about 3:00 a.m. to try not to impact people and, and their day-to-day operations. I will say that the city manager, town manager from Emerald Isle reached out to me requesting some assistance. Maybe you probably saw on the news the impacts that they had from a torn attic event that actually came through some of their city. We will be sending six or seven of our crew down along with a couple pieces of equipment to assist Emerald Isle with their cleanup of some of their C and D debris, construction demolition debris where it was impacted as, as kind of a mutual aid assistance to them. I've checked with Mr. Charles and Mr. Montane, who is away right now at a conference. But both of them felt confident that our staff would be able to continue day-to-day operations but also provide some assistance to a local sistering community here. And, and so we're gonna be starting that tomorrow. We'll send them down there for several days to help out Emerald Isle with their cleanup efforts.
How about Overcoke, anything? You know, that's pretty much Hyde County, but...
Yeah, Overcoke is an unincorporated town, so it's not really like reaching out to a, a town manager. But I'm, I'm happy to make contact with county manager with Hyde County and see if there's any way in which we can, we can assist them. I know, Mayor, you, you and your daughter have done some collection of goods to be able to take down to them and assist them in whatever way possible. But we're, I'm happy to do that if, if the board wishes for me to do so.
I know that presently, my daughter Jenna and, and my son Adam are taking a lot of supplies to Cedar Island. And then there's some, some folks I guess are gonna take it on a ferry over. So, you know, it's just like Reverend Jim Penninger called me a couple days before Hurricane and said that Temple Backstreet was ready, ready again. And of course, at the time, we, we had no idea if we were gonna be lucky or not. So, you know, somebody did a heap of praying. I'm just so sorry what happened at Emerald Isle and Overcoke and at Bahamas. So, again, the, the many folks that volunteer and the relief efforts. You know, New Bern is just lucky to be able to partner and we have to do our part. You know, years ago during Hurricane Katrina, I remember the city, I was, I was just, been on the board a year or two. We really reached out, if you remember, to New Orleans as a board. So again, these are things we do as a city to help our sister cities and the best values.
We had some of the cities helping us when we needed it.
Yeah.
It makes a big difference. I was at it with, in New Orleans helping and it makes a big difference.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I, I have spoken at several conference events. And one of the things I will continue to reiterate at those discussions is, is the value of, of mutual aid contracts and having those in place and being able to rely on your sister cities throughout the state and, and reason to assist in, in your recovery efforts if they're able to do so.
I wanna, I wanna really thank you for the way the staff, all 470 employees, worked through this one. And, you know, you really prioritize the needs and I know we were 14-some thousand customers out of power, Charlie. And, you know, City of New Bern, you can't say we don't have it serviced. And I really do wanna, you know, tell you how much, how many compliments I've had from the public about the employees and from the manager right on down to the most recent employee hire. Thank you for what you did for our city.
Yeah, Mark, I just want to thank you for keeping us updated. You really kept me updated. You know, you and staff because you couldn't have done it by yourself. So you always got to recommend your staff and the employees. They were very valuable to us to keep the city up, operating and running. And y'all just seemed like to me, you was fired up and ready to go.
It was, you know, like I said, our staff, it's, we've kind of been through a couple of these now. And last year was definitely a trying time, obviously a much worse disaster. But obviously, there was lots of lessons learned, things that we discussed in the off-season about ways in which we can approve. And, you know, like I said, hats off to staff and, and all of their efforts. I mean, even my department heads, I, I had them come in on Labor Day so that we had a preparatory meeting, making sure that we were ready to go and that we were able to come in Tuesday morning directing staff. And what they needed to do is final preparations coming up from the storm. So taking their holiday, paid holiday, coming in and actually meeting. And, and I, I mean, I, I worked Sunday, Monday, and, you know, both of those being holiday weekends. So wanted to make sure that we were prepared, ready to go. Second item I have, I know the board had requested a work session next Tuesday to discuss noise and the noise ordinance, the potential draft ordinance that we have in place. I did at the, at the request of a majority of the board who chimed in about the possibility of seeing what the cost would be for a noise consultant to potentially come in and provide some recommendations and review of the draft policy as well as some field work collection. I have received that quote. It's $10,400 is what the quote was for them to come in, do that, produce the report, come and present it to the board. So I'm kind of at a point where I need either direction from the board. And then secondly, I, I'm very, very, very doubtful, probably to the tune of 100% doubtful that they would not be able to produce something to that regard in time for our meeting on Tuesday after work session. So if the board wishes to like reschedule that meeting, I'm happy to do so. Obviously, you know, we have the consultant quote. I'm happy to move forward with that. I just need some direction from the board.
I, I have a question. We were all supposed to meet with the police department and go downtown and listen to the, the noise and get our readings on our own. I know I had the opportunity to go down on a Friday night and met with a police officer at 9:30 and stayed until about 11 o'clock. And it was very interesting with the, what, what the readings were. I was wondering how anybody else, if they had the opportunity to do it and what the, the results were.
I have not yet.
I have not. I plan to schedule mine this week.
I thought we were supposed to be getting together and so...
No, they changed it where we would do it individually. But if we decide as a board to hire, con...
to hire a consultant, then I'd rather rely on the data provided by someone that is an expertise in this and doesn't have a biased viewpoint. So, for ten thousand dollars, I'm going to say that I would be in support of, you know, hiring a consultant because it kind of takes away from us and allows an expert to do research and provide their feedback.
Thank you.
I was just going to say that that was the one thing that when we had all that discussion from the public that we had not done, was to have somebody come in and provide us with that information. I also made a comment that night, you can go back and check it, that whatever that person recommends, we want to probably adopt it because it's going to cost money, so just be prepared to be unhappy with whatever those recommendations will be. So, that's my only caveat.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure on moving forward with the consultant?
I say go for it.
I see. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Yes.
All right. So, with that being said, like, I think it would probably be advisable for us to reschedule the work session to a point where, once I talk with the consultant...
We can always, instead of noise, do drainage, if you want to have a workshop.
As long as we can get everything together in a week, and if the board can give us an idea of whatever you want to discuss and however much you want to discuss, we'll, you know, top items of, topic items and everything else, I'm happy to do that, but...
I said to the board, I just think there's a lot of, you know, different areas of the city, different situations associated with the contour of the city and elevation, topography, hydrologies. I think there's just a hundred different, I mean, springs and, you know, there's just a lot of issues. I think you heard a lot of them tonight. I don't know that you would have all the answers to questions, and I don't think the board have all the questions, but...
When will Matt be back?
He should be back by then.
But will he be back in time to get prepared for it's the question.
He's got a good, he's got a good number two right there, I think, that we could probably have somebody.
My viewpoint would be, I kind of agree with the mayor, just because lately, we've been having a lot of discussions from, I'm getting inundated with phone calls and HOA meetings about ditches that even if we're having a, that is already scheduled, where we can kind of just talk about the update of what's going on with the possible of the USDA money or, you know, the plan of action for cleaning out these ditches. Maybe it could be more informal and possible to have some questions because I have emails from every area in my ward that's concerned about ditching, and it's basically the same thing, but if we could speak to it on a...
We can definitely give you an update on that. You know, there's no guarantees on the FEMA and EDA stuff, but, you know, if we get those, then that's great, and we definitely can show you how we would prioritize doing those, but...
If we did do that, would the board be amenable to staff providing us an update with where we are on FEMA?
Yes.
I mean, we're over a year now, and how much money have we gotten, Mark?
Actually, it's kind of finally starting to loosen up a little bit.
So, that's good, you can update us, because the last time I heard, last week, it was zero. So, I think it would be a good idea for us to be...
Since it's already scheduled in the public, so we're aware of it, I think if we just change the actual topics, that'd be better, so we're not wasting a meeting.
All right, so we'll keep the work session for next Tuesday night. Two items of discussion would be drainage and the other would be update on FEMA reimbursements, so we can definitely prepare those, which kind of segues into the next item that I have. We, as you recall, we had some discussions regarding the city hall elevator. We have received the report from the architect. They have three different recommended options. We can handle that in one of two ways. We could include that as part of the discussion in the same work session.
Yes.
Or we could ask the board, or mayor, whoever would like to appoint some members of the board to work with me to bring back a recommendation to the full board on one of these three options, and obviously, there's costs associated with each one of these options, but I'm happy to entertain what the board's direction would be on that.
I would like to appoint Alderman Bingle, Alderman Astor, and Alderman Best to ad hoc. If you have sufficient time to get with staff and kind of update, you know, I don't know if we'd be able to answer every question next Tuesday night or whatever, but I'd like to do that if that's...
I like the idea of just adding it on to that Tuesday so that everyone is there to kind of hear what the plans are and have a slight discussion, because at the end of the day, even what you present, if you present one or two or three to us, we all still have to vote on money and the implementation of it. So, it's just easier to present to all of us than just three people.
Yeah, my idea about the appointment was, it's in first ward, which would be Alderman Bingle. Bob, you had, what, thirty, how many years in the city?
Thirty-eight.
And you have vast knowledge about city hall and everything. So, I just, that was my thought. If it's not pleasing with the board, if whatever the board's pleasure is, please do it.
Although city hall is in ward one, we all have to make a decision on whether it's going to be elevator in here, not that any of us is against it, but I would like to hear what the three options are.
Well, I think that's what, I think, I agree with you. I think the options are there. I think we need to have time to sit, talk, discuss each one of the options, and then we'll report back to the board.
I'd like to move the meeting to five o'clock, though, if we're going to do that, because drainage and FEMA are going to be a lot of discussion, and then this with three options will be a lot of discussion, and I know that it gets long and I'll even cook supper if I want to.
You could always add an end time to the meeting.
Well, that's true. I mean, we can, but I'm just concerned that, you know, we start at six, and by eight o'clock, we've only covered one or two, and then it gets late, and I don't... Mark?
I think we ought to leave the elevator out of until after three committee members get an opportunity to discuss it with the city manager and see what the options are ourselves.
Right, but when you do that, are you all three going to present to the board all three options or the one that you think is best? So, if you're going to...
Well, we can discuss all three options, but we're going to give you a recommendation.
Right, but we all can do that at the same time on Tuesday to seven P M.
Well, then, there's no need to have a committee.
That's what I'm saying. We don't need a committee. Just present all to us at once. We make our comments and move forward.
Mark, is this, next Tuesday, is that going to be another time for you and all staff to get this information together for us?
It's already together.
This document is done.
Okay.
It's ready. What I would probably do, if you wind up, if it ends up that all of you want to have input at this work session, I'd probably make seven copies of it, and I'd give all seven of you a copy and ask you to do your homework and come in with questions, ready to go versus just on the fly during a work session. So, that way, we can be very pointed, very, you know, direct on what we need to get accomplished during that, and that way, if the board wants to move forward with something with the city hall, that way, it leads to the next agenda, which would develop a project fund, which would develop a direction that we could go with, maybe potentially with the architect, if we want to do that, for design services, a lot of different things. So, there's a lot of things that come after a decision is made about the elevator.
Yeah, I wasn't speaking just specifically about the elevator. I was talking about the drainage and then also for next Tuesday, including all of that.
FEMA update, honestly, ten minutes. Honestly, we'll tell you where we are.
All right.
As long as it doesn't go down the path of which direction we're going to go with, you know, if we get this, and which direction we're going to go with Stanley White or whatever we're going to do. It's going to be, this is where we are. This is what we received. This has been submitted. We can definitely provide you that. That's no problem. That may be a ten-minute discussion. The two big topics, I think, would be the drainage, because obviously, all of you are going to be wanting to have some input on that, and then I think this would probably be something that would need to be discussed as well.
So, my idea about the ad hoc was, is to try to get some of those answers out of the way so that when we have the workshop, we don't get stuck, that you have questions that you did not have time to prepare, and it was one reason that I suggested that. So, you know, at this time, the board needs to give the staff directions, how you would like to handle the report at the workshop. Do you want to just wait and then answer, ask questions then, or do you want to have... Whoever wants to be on the committee is fine.
Well, I think it's a great idea that he said if he can make a copy and we do our own homework, and then if we have questions, we present them at that time.
Yeah. I'd agree with that.
Okay, is that the pleasure of the board? Is that how you want to do it?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, we're going to do that. And Mr. Stevens, have you got direction on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Be three items on the agenda. Drainage, FEMA, and city hall elevator discussion for next Tuesday, so we'll have that prepared and ready to go for y'all. Six P M, stay on with that time and same back channel.
Do we want to change it to five P M? Can everybody do five? I would recommend.
Want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we amend the time to start at five P M.
Second.
Motion for secondly, discussion on a motion, say aye. All of us say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Brenda, you going to send that out?
Aye, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, we will be prepared for that, and unfortunately, on a sad note, one other thing, city employee Mike Brown, gentleman, been battling cancer for a long time, been employee of the city for twenty-five years, passed away, so I just want to make sure all of you remain aware of that. Worked with Water and Sewer in Jordan's Department. I think he's been well-loved and well-liked over in that department for a long time, so I just want to make sure all of you recognize that. I don't think there's been any funeral, formal funeral arrangements that's been set at this point, but if you'll just keep that in your minds, if you choose to reach out, or if you remember them in your thoughts and prayers. So, thank you. That's all I have tonight, sir.
Okay, let's go to new business, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Well, I really don't have very much after being on vacation. Thank you for all those that helped me during my time I was away, and then coming back and getting right into a hurricane. I'm still trying to catch up on a few things, but for many of you, you know I was born and raised in New York, and tomorrow is nine eleven, and so I would be remiss if I didn't mention that eighteen years ago tonight, thousands of people went to sleep, not knowing that they would never come home to their beds again. Hundreds of people boarded planes, never knowing that they would make it to their destination. Hundreds of firemen, policemen, EMS workers, never went home to take care of their family or finish their shift, so included in those were some of my high school classmates. So, I just would like to say that tomorrow's a solemn day for many of us. When you go home tonight, hug your loved ones a little bit more because we are not promised tomorrow, and we don't know what tomorrow will bring, and never forget what happened on nine eleven. That's all I have.
Anything? Alderman Harris?
The only thing I have tonight is I just want to commend Mark and the rest of the staff during the hurricane, everything that you guys did in keeping us updated, and I just greatly appreciate it. I feel like we were more planned this year and ready to go to take on Hurricane Dorian, so good job.
Thank you. Alderman Asher?
I too would like to thank Mark and the staff. It was an excellent job. Mark, you, thank you for keeping us posted on everything that's going on, and I'd ask that Chief Boyd, do you have an event tomorrow, correct, for nine eleven? Would you come up and give us the dates and times and stuff so everyone will know?
As always, churches will be feeding police and fire tomorrow at lunchtime. They've been doing that for the past eighteen years since nine eleven. But we're also, we tried to do it last year, but we had a hurricane stop us, but be a fire police at the museum at the Bell Tower, it'll be at six o'clock tomorrow night. We'll be doing a short memorial service.
Thank you. And I don't have anything else, sir.
Alderman Kimson?
Yes, I want to thank the board for reaching out and the passing of my sister, and I thank the city for the plant that they sent, and that was a really special time to hear from everybody in a different manner, to raise the bar, to give me encouragement, and I thank you so very much for that. And then, right after, shortly after that, I lost my great uncle, so it's been, you know, pretty busy. And I thank you, Mark, for the contact that you made with me during the storm and the hard work that everybody put out to keep everyone safe in the city, and I just want to say thank you again for everything. And one other thing, Mark, do you have any information that you can share with the public tonight based on where we are with Stanley White? There's been a lot of questions about that there, that if we can give some sort of information, where we are, what we're trying to do to sort of, just share some information, because right now, that would help out a great deal.
Sure. I wish, and this is with all sincerity, under no circumstances are we trying to hide anything or not share information. We share information as we receive it and share it with you as the board, but J R can confirm with me, we're still awaiting some decisions from FEMA on the four twenty-eighth process about the replacement or rebuild or relocation, whichever direction it winds up going from FEMA. We have subsequently recently sent letters to representatives at the White House, both of our senators, encouraging them to reach out and try to push this process along with the understanding that that facility, whether it exists at its current location or a new location, or whatever it may be, is critical and vital to this community. So, we have tried to urge them to reach out to FEMA to try to see if they can push this thing along. That's about as much of an update as I can give you right now, and we're doing things now, trying to push it along politically. We've been trying to do and submit everything that they have requested us to do above and beyond, in my mind, way beyond what it used to be whenever we went through Irene, Alderman Astor, and things like that, so, but it is, we're still awaiting word, honestly.
Foster, I have a question for you. The summer program with working with the kids from that area, where are we now? Are we still continuing to work with them on a day-to-day basis, and could you give us a little update there as well, please?
Yes, we are working with the kids in the community of Duffy Field, and also, once the Omega Center is ready for us to move in there, we will begin doing programs in that area, which we anticipate, hopefully, within the next several weeks.
Okay. Thank you so very much.
So, Foster, so you're saying that in a couple of weeks, that facility will be ready?
In the next several weeks, yes. They started working on it a few weeks ago, so they're progressing on that, yes.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, sir? That's it, thank you. Alderman Bingle?
No, the only thing I was going to ask about the Omega Center progress, but that's it. Only other thing I have is I just hope everybody went out and voted today. And that's it.
Okay. Alderman Ellis?
Yes, sir, two quick things. Mr. Stevens, I guess we can wait till Matt returns from his trip, but I'd like for us to meet on site at the extension that the contractor performed for the third lane on Trent Road. I wouldn't even disrespect my son, who's ten years old, to say he could have done a better job, but that is ridiculous, the quality of that workmanship, not to mention the fact that when we were going home two weeks ago, it was dark outside, and they decided they wanted to strike the road at that point in time. They had no work lights or anything, so I don't know who that contractor was, but we need to put him on our do-not-use list for the city, but that whole area needs to be addressed.
I will tell you that we're on top of that one. We actually, Mr. Charles, Mr. Montane, and myself met out there. We took pictures and sent a very strongly worded message to those who were performing that work, and we're still holding their money, and we won't release their money until it's rectified. Okay, thank you. So, but I'm happy to meet you at your convenience.
And not to belabor the point, but I did want to mention that echoed my sentiments that the staff did a phenomenal job during the hurricane. When you have a microburst downtown and Public Works beats the news crew down here, and they're picking the stuff up, and I had sent you a text message about a drainage issue. By the time I got over, George and his crew, Avery, they were already there, so there is no perfect staff, there's no perfect elected official. We all tried to do the best and work as hard as we possibly can, and we're not always going to meet everyone's expectations, but with this last storm, I personally couldn't ask anymore from what the staff did, so thank you all. That's it, ma'am.
Okay, do we need a closed session?
Yes, sir.
Is there any other business for this board this time?
Motion adjourned?
Second. Motion second to adjourn. Any discussion on fairer motions, say aye. All opposed, say motion.